James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
It's fine. I'd go ahead and gapple.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call to order the meeting, the regular meeting of the James City County Service Authority Board of Directors.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Powell, please call the roll.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Eisenhour.
Here.
Do we have any presentations tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Public comment.
We do have one public speaker card. Yes, ma'am.
One public speaker, and that would be Ms. Meg Payne. Please come forward and state your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Meg Payne, and I live at 8427 Sheldon Branch Place in Toano. As you know, I'm here to speak out against a recent amendment to the JCSA regulation that has major unintended negative consequences for our family and for James City County as a whole. We own 50 acres on Forge Road, which we have plans to build on and create a small agricultural neighborhood of family farms. We believe this would be a great addition to the community, which values local, sustainable agriculture, family-owned businesses, and preservation of open space. The standard practice in that area, where utilities are not readily available and lot sizes are typically several acres, is to use wells and septic systems. This new JCSA regulation, as currently written, would require us to connect to public water and sewer in order to even split our parcel into two 25-acre lots. That would mean installing over $1 million worth of infrastructure, which would not only be a huge financial burden to us, but would also create a massive liability and expense for the county, who would have to service and maintain that infrastructure indefinitely. There are also concerns that the county would not even be able to provide enough water pressure for homes that are thousands of feet off the main road, which is where we want to build in order to preserve the view shed on Forge Road and maintain the rural feel of the community character corridor. Requiring this needless infrastructure would cause a major disturbance on Forge Road and would have zero upside to us, our neighbors, or the taxpayers of James City County. It would not generate enough revenue to pay for itself and would provide no additional value for those wanting to live an agricultural lifestyle. It simply does not make sense. We do not believe this regulation was intended to target very low-density agricultural areas like Forge Road, where high-density growth is not desired. We believe a modification of this regulation is necessary to prevent our county from engaging in such poor business practices and driving up costs for everyone. A simple solution could be to exempt minor subdivisions with very low density, such as five-acre lot sizes, or provide an exemption for properties that are on the outskirts of the PSA where no growth is planned. This would not only alleviate the burden on the county of maintaining unnecessary infrastructure, but would also discourage higher-density subdivisions, preserve more open space, and promote sustainable agricultural uses. In closing, I will leave you with this question. When enforcing a regulation is not in the best interest of the county, shouldn't the board or general manager have some discretion to provide an exception? We sincerely hope you will consider this modification in order to allow for properties like ours to remain agricultural and avoid creating additional cost burdens for the taxpayers of James City County. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Okay, we'll go to our consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar commits of the following items: contract awards, submersible motors for Five Forks Water Treatment Plant, and minutes adoption.
With the motion, the consent agenda.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye. No public hearings tonight, sir?
No, ma'am.
Okay, the Board of Considerations, the JCSA Fiscal Year '26 Budget Appropriation and Regulations Ch- (laugh) Changes. Mr. Powell, would you please give the staff report?
Before you tonight are two resolutions, one appropriating the budget and the other one, the commensurate change in the JCSA regulations to implement the changes that are recommended in the budget. Just as a reminder, the rates in the budget are based on the five-year rate study that you approved back in the winter. You held a public hearing on the budget last month, had a work session on it last month. There have been no changes to the budget, proposed budget, since the public hearing. There was one changed, as a reminder, there was one change to the budget since it was published, which was to appropriate $107,000 from reserves to fund a retirement health program. And I would just note that if approved, the monthly, monthly rate for the typical 5,000-gallon-a-month user would go from $50.65 per month to $55.11 per month. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Discussion? Mr. Call?
So, uh, one, one motion on both resolutions would be, would be acceptable if you want to do it that way.
I'll move the motion.
Okay, okay. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye. No public hearings tonight, sir?
No, ma'am.
Okay, the Board of Considerations, the JCSA Fiscal Year '26 Budget Appropriation and Regulations Ch- (laugh) Changes. Mr. Powell, would you please give the staff report?
Uh, before you tonight are two resolutions, one appropriating the budget and the other one, the commensurate change in the JCSA regulations to implement the, the changes that are recommended in the budget. Just as a reminder, the rates in the budget are based on the five-year rate study that you approved back in the winter. You held a public hearing on the budget last month, had a work session on it last month. There have been no changes to the budget, proposed budget, since the public hearing. There was one changed, as a reminder, there was one change to the budget since it was published, which was to appropriate $107,000 from reserves to fund a retirement health program. And I would just note that if approved, the monthly, monthly rate for the typical 5,000-gallon-a-month user would go from $50.65 per month to $55.11 per month. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Discussion? Mr. Call?
So, uh, I, one, one motion on both resolutions would be, would be acceptable if you want to do it that way.
I'll move the motion.
Okay, okay. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
And Ms. Knoll?
Aye. The Board request and directives, does anybody have any statements they want to make tonight?
No.
I would like to say one thing about Mrs. Payne's presentation, just some ideas I I have met with the Paynes, I know the property, so forth. It's at the end of the PSA, it's the last property on Forge Road that has the PSA. Part of their property is out of the PSA. I think that we have to look differently at how we measure the 1,000 feet from the main road back, or do we measure the 1,000 feet from the fire station back? If we measured it from the main hookup, which is on 60, and went back, they would be outside of the 1,000 feet, and they would not have that requirement. That's just one thing I wanted to bring up. Actually, putting anything on that road would tear up the road, of course, and we've got all those people on Forge Road who like it being a community character and so forth. If they are pushed to accept this and ex- and put in the infrastructure, it's going to cost them close to $1 million, which they have to pay, and then you may not be able to get the water out there or the sewage reliability that you want. I just think that some, sometimes if we don't take it, if we don't work with them or find out a way to measure it differently, like from 60, which would exempt them, that they can rezone and they can put in a higher-density project. This is seven, nine lots, all of them over five acres, set way back from the road, and past their property is all rural lands and no PSA. So I would like maybe that the staff to look into measuring it differently or figuring out a way that they might be able to appeal this or allow you to make that decision, which I know you can't make.
Ms. Knoll, can I just say that, you know, I've heard, I've met with the Paynes and heard about their proposed development. I've gotten information from Mr. Powell about the regulation and the impact that the regulation would have on this property. I think it would probably be worthwhile for us to just get a report that would indicate what precise kind of impacts a change in this regulation for this property owner would be and what options would be available in that regard. So, at least if we had a written report, that would give us something to react to, I think.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to see some options for them.
I think I can provide such a report by your next board meeting, if that's okay.
I would like to know on that how that would change anything else in the community. The reason we put this in place is because of that. And it, and once again, we'll be opening up another door. And, you know, sometimes we need to stick with our regulations and what we've got in place and, you know, and it wasn't into PSA, it'd be different. We'd be one to 20 acres. So, you know, and if they do come back for a rezoning, they have to come back for a rezoning. And I don't know how well that would play on Forge Road.
I don't think it would play very well at all, so, yeah, we do know that.
That does play in my decision.
Okay.
Well, I think that's the purpose of getting the report, is just to get a sense of whether there are other instances in which the, a change in regulation would have an impact.
I have asked that same question, and I think the initial response was that there were only a few places that, that potentially could have some sort of impact, and that I, what I'd like to see is the specifics on that.
Okay.
With the report, so that we have something, because, you know, it's, if you make a change to accommodate for one, you've got to figure out what the unintended consequences are and what the impact is for everybody in the county. So it's, that's uppermost on my mind when we're looking at this, so that would be helpful if you could provide more detail on that.
Yes, sir.
One thing I thought, too, we kind of ran into this a couple of years ago with Bush Springs Road, is that the seven properties that come before theirs on Forge Road, if their septic field fails or their well fails, they are, they are required by the county to hook up, and that's $20,000 per person plus. So just, that could be really hard on them, too, so we have to think about that, too.
You gotta, you gotta think also, if those systems fail and you have to put in a special system, that's 50,000 to 60,000 dollars.
Right, right.
Right.
Just minimum, just starting.
But, but once you go down that slippery slope, there's a lot of septic tanks in James City County.
Yep. Okay.
It's a deep a slipper, slippery.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on. General Manager's report.
I don't have any further report.
You don't? Okay. So, move to adjourn until 5:00 PM on June 10th for the regular meeting?
A move.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Tripp?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
And Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call to order this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors for a regular meeting. Mr. Stevens, please call the roll.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Palatin District. Ms. Knoll?
Here.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District and his vice chair of the board. Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the James Sound District and his chair of the board. Sitting to my left, far left, is Adam Kinsman, County Attorney. I'm Scott Stevens, County Administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Okay, we normally have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Our pledge leader today, who was scheduled, is unable to be here, so I guess we have a substitute, and I'm going to be able to enter, make the introduction. This is Afton Buck, who is a fifth grader at Matoka Elementary and is also part of the group that we will be hearing from during the presentation here shortly. So if you would give about 15 seconds for a moment of silence and then lead us in a pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we go. We have a...
Thank you.
Okay. We move next to presentations, and our first presentation is a proclamation of National Police Week. I'm going to go ahead and read it, and then I'll come down there, and we will present this to the chief, Chief Jamison. A proclamation, National Police Week, May 11th through 17th, 2025, Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15th, 2025. Whereas the safety and well-being of James City County residents is essential to the strength and prosperity of our community, and whereas law enforcement officers serve with dedication and professionalism to protect and serve the citizens of James City County, uphold the law, and ensure the safety of our neighborhoods, schools, and families; and whereas these officers willingly face risks each day in the line of duty, demonstrating courage, commitment, and a steadfast devotion to protecting life and property; and whereas National Police Week provides an opportunity to recognize and honor contributions of law enforcement officers, both past and present, who have dedicated their lives to maintaining peace and justice; and whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, a time to solemnly remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, as well as to acknowledge the profound loss felt by their families and colleagues; and whereas James City County recognizes the invaluable service of our law enforcement officers and expresses deep gratitude for their commitment to safeguarding our community, now therefore be it resolved that I, James O. Eisenhour Jr., Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, do hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in James City County. I encourage all citizens to join in recognizing the, and expressing appreciation for the dedicated service and sacrifice of our law enforcement officers and witness whereof I hereinto set my hand and cause the seal of the County of James City, Virginia, to be affixed this 13th day of May, 2025. Thank you, Chief. Cats, and Canines Program. And I, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Bob Tubbs, and I told him he's got a certain amount of time, and I've got the hook in the corner here, so.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board, senior staff, school board members, honored guests, and especially our young artists and future leaders. Normally, at this point, I wanted to show a video, but in deference to Delegate Battin's very busy schedule, I'm going to ask her to come up, just to say a word or two, so she can be off to the next thing, and then we're going to show a quick video.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I know you have a very busy schedule tonight, so I'm going to keep my remarks brief, and I'm not actually going to talk much about the organization, because you're going to hear more about it. I just would like to share with everyone who's listening the importance of the work that Mr. Tubbs does. And it's the advocacy that he does outside of any sort of legislative process or showing up at these meetings, it's the connections that he builds with the community. And if there's one thing that I have learned from working with Mr. Tubbs over the years, it's whenever there is a problem that's too big or something that he can't accomplish, he never takes no for an answer. And so the only thing that I would like to leave everyone here tonight with is, don't give up if there's a cause or an interest in which you are, you know, invested and supportive. Continue working throughout the year and throughout your community, everywhere you go, to raise awareness of that issue, because it absolutely does make a difference. And I think that, you know, the conversations that you're going to have here tonight and the presentations that you will receive will really highlight the efficacy of the work that he does, and it's very much a testament to him as a person, but also to the community that he has built here in the greater Williamsburg area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Battin. Well, how am I supposed to follow that? But anyway, before I say a word, I want to share with you a short video made by the students of Matoka Elementary and Providence Christian Academy, a little project called Kids, Cats, and Canines. You'll see shelter pets, student artwork, civic pride, and more compassion than you'd expect from a seven-year-old with a marker. Video, please.[1637.22] Now that we've had a moment for smiles and maybe tear up a little, I'd like to invite two of the other two speakers here, just from the schools, just to share with us a minute of what it's like to work with these fabulous kids and the experience that they have, and the way it changes, both the teachers and the children.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Liz Hamilton, and I am representing Providence Classical School, and I coordinated four different classes with over 50 children who participated in this program. And through the Courses program, we were able to supplement both our art curriculum and also our writing curriculum. The students were able to work on outlines, rough drafts, final drafts, persuasive writing, learning point of view, talking from the point of view of the dog or the cat that they were writing about. Several of our students fell so in love with the animal they were given to write about that they went to the shelters to meet that animal, and it gave them a real sense of the community that they're in, and that they, even as young as they are, can make a difference. So, I thank you for your time.
Principal Bobby Knolls.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Knolls, Principal of Matoka Elementary School. Thank you for having me here tonight. I would echo basically what you've heard today about the writing and the connection of the curriculum to a very important project, but I had the teacher write some words that I think are very poignant as the power of this project. She states, "I was really heartwarming to hear the conversations among students as they read about the animals they have chosen, lots of the discussions about their own dogs and cats, and how much they loved them and missed the ones that they had passed. The lesson was a wonderful opportunity to show empathy and compassion towards animals needing a home and a family for them to love. Teaching compassion and empathy, it was a wonderful, wonderful part of this project, and I was so proud of my students in seeing the work. But I also want to have just a big thank you for Mrs. Henderson and Mrs. Lindquist, and one of the classroom teachers who was back there who helped coordinate this. This was a very, very time-consuming but worthwhile project. Thank you."
Okay. So, thank you all. Appreciate that. This project didn't begin with a grant, a subcommittee, or even a PowerPoint. It started with grants, compassion, and an idea that kids could be part of a solution for our shelter and for our civic life. Kids, Cats, and Canines teaches students not just to care for animals, but to become voices for them. And in doing so, they become better neighbors, better citizens, and one day, better leaders. We've had an incredible community support. Busch Gardens, led by Kevin Lemke, has donated and supported this project for years, including in the video there, a full day donated to celebrate animal welfare, plus tickets. I didn't get a chance to tell you, but you've got some tickets coming your way for Busch Gardens. So, Petsmart, with over 10,000 stuffed animals, which I know you all have at least one version of, now you're going to get a second one tonight. Streamline Roofing, who did... Do you mind modeling your shirt there for me? So, the Children of Matoka got these animal protection t-shirts as a result of the Attorney General, with the logos on the back. Thank you so much, Ivy. And Local Rescue Heroes, Homes for Hounds, Heritage Humane Society, and perhaps its serendipity, continue to care for the most vulnerable animals with dedication and love. Now that we have preparing, now as we preparing for this presentation, we received a very special last-minute drawing from the Assistant County Administrator Brad Reisenheimer, or as now as he prefers to be called, Vincent Van Gogh. His stick figure masterpiece, which you saw in the video, has been proudly included in the kids' art collection, and I've even brought some Band-Aids, just in case inspiration strikes and we need to protect the other ear. It's a wonderful addition, particularly nice to have those who have an ear for art. Thank you, Brad. We're here tonight for two lighthearted but meaningful requests. One is the Kids, Cats, and Canines Wall of Fame. We'd love to display the students' artwork in visible community spaces like the rec center, the county seat, local fire, and police stations. I don't know if you shop Trader Joe's, but they have a nice display as you check out there. You may have seen. So, if Trader Joe's can do it at a checkout, I'm hoping that we can find space near a copier somewhere. The other thing is a quarterly district mascot program. We're inviting each supervisor from all the districts to partner with the kids, schools, and shelters in their district to choose an adoptable animal as an official district mascot. So, it would be a cat or dog, it could be farm animal, it could be whatever. It's fun, community-driven, and a great excuse to post a puppy on your Facebook page without being accused of running for reelection. This initiative is organized by the Virginia Animal Protection Group, a volunteer-led effort that continues, connects legislation, education, shelter, and community outreach to protect animals and strengthen civic partnership across Virginia. We'll close this evening with a group photo, and then you're all invited to join us at Sales by Victor for a relaxed dinner and conversation. No speeches, no votes, just pasta, and maybe a few kids passionately defending why they are drawing or should be made the cover of the community's annual report, or county's annual report. Thank you for helping us raise a generation that cares deeply about animals and about the world around them, and thank you for providing, thank you for proving that small hands can make big change. You want to do the group video, a group picture? And for those who didn't see it, they can see it. Why don't we come out and put a quick photo? Bobby. Bobby. Liz. Everybody. Oh, and we've got to give you guys the, we've got a folder and a stuffed animal for you. The girls have...
Thank you. Thank you. Great job.
Good job.
Oh, Brad, I got your drawing.
Chairman, I think I've got a rescue pup at home who will be happy to...
Yeah.
...take advantage of this one.
I have to protect this one against two black labs.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. You'll have a wonderful dinner.
I have a new grandson. He'll love that. Thank you. I appreciate that. Very cute. Oh, those are very safe, by the way. They're very safe. They don't have button eyes or...
They should start chewing on them.
Yeah.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're now going to move on to the public comments section of our meeting, and if you will remind everyone who is speaking that when you come up, please identify yourself, your name, and your address, and for the record, and we'll have the timer, and when the red light comes on, your time is up, so we have to move to the next person. So, Peg Borman is our first speaker.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman Eisenhower, members of the Board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Purse, Mr. Reisenheimer, Mr. Kinsman, Ms. Dahlman, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm Peg Borman. I reside at 17 Settlers Lane in downtown Lightfoot, and I'm here to talk to you all again tonight about a little bit of trash. As you recall, we had the annual spring litter cleanup back on the 26th of April, and I don't have a good number for that as of yet, but the Great American Cleanup on March 27th was, and 28th was, is reported as 63 volunteers from James City. Of course, this was an area-wide cleanup. It had 63 volunteers, 57 bags, with 1,425 pounds, two tires, 112 volunteer hours. But we had, I'm happy to report that the Clean County yielded only one tire for the annual cleanup. That's usually has, that particular group called me and told me, believe it or not, we only had one tire, and they expected at least 75, because they usually have about 75 or 80 tires. So, one tire. Isn't that great? So, I really feel like that's a great accomplishment. And there's a lot less illegal dumps and disposal sites that are out there in the backwoods and the roads and in the woods, and people think that they won't be seen when they dump them. But, so I'm really pleased to know that we don't have all of those. We still have a few that crop up every now and then, but I'm happy to say there's nothing like there used to be. I want to remind you also that this card that we have, we're always looking for businesses to honor as a clean business for our quarterly breakfasts, and you can visit the online website and nominate somebody, or give me a call, and I'll go check them out. But it's jamescitycountyva.gov/609. And we still need a representative from Powhatan. And I swear I want to find one before you give up. But we also need one from Jamestown, because the one we had in Jamestown got drawn out for the last districting. But we'll take anybody from the other districts, too, because the more we have on the Clean County Commission, the better we can serve the county and be more effective. And I want to remind you that some of you have told me you got the thing for Will Barnes' Day. Well, I hope you all got it on your calendar, because I'm looking forward to it myself. It's going to be on his birthday this year, and so I'm excited about that. So, thank you for listening to me one more time, and let's all work together to make James City County truly a clean place to live, work, and play, and I'm proud to call James City County my home.
Thank you. Next speaker is Stephen Link.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Link, and I reside at 6171 South Mayfair Circle in Williamsburg. You know, we started off this evening with teddy bears and kids and canines. Everybody's smiling. Michael, we were just smiling away, and I got to come up here and complain about something. So, I'm sorry. I'm resetting the tone of the meeting. I live in the villages of Westminster. It's a subdivision on Richmond Road between Premium Outlets and Lightfoot, and I'm going to talk about my concerns with the, whatever process you're using to assess the value of houses. So, that's what my topic is. There are 380 homes in our subdivision, and we are the community of high-priced homes such as Governor's Land or Ford's Connolly. Our homes are just moderately priced, ideal for young couples with children or seniors. My home was built by, never met the gentleman, Tommy Lauk, Lauk, I guess, in 1999, and there are 10 houses on my street that had the same floor plan. This week, I went digging through the bowels of my filing cabinet, and I came up with a real assessment form that listed my land and house valuation in 2012 for a total valuation of $313,000. I found another assessment for 2022. It lists my land and house valuation as $343,300. In the 10 years that passed from the earlier assessment, they found that my land and house had increased by $30,300, or about $3,000 per year during that 10-year time span. That sort of mirrors the assessments I experienced when I lived in my previous state of California. There, they just increased the valuations automatically each year of a person's property and house by 1% a year, and that's what this amounted to. Then I looked at the assessment for 2023. It increased to $381,100. That's an increase of $37,800 in just one assessment period. That's $7,500 more than the total increases of the previous 10 years combined. I didn't see there was any way my house could increase by that much in just one assessment period. Then I looked at 2025. Now they assess my property at home at $532,000. That's an increase of $150,900 from the previous assessment. It's obscene, or it's absurd. Let's not say obscene. I can't believe that any house in Virginia increased in value by $150,900 in just one assessment. It skipped totally over the $400,000 range. Do these assessments increases cost me money? Yes, they do. In the past two years, my annual property tax bill has increased from $2,883 to $4,149. You might think I'm the lucky guy. You say the value of my house just increased by $150,900 in the last year? Wow! Look how much more I can sell it for when I sell it. I'm a lucky guy. Well, my house has three bedrooms. It's just perfect for a young family with children. How many young families with children can afford a $532,000 house? I couldn't look at myself in the mirror if I tried to sell it for that much. I really couldn't. It's just not worth it. So just thought I'd express my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Link. The next speaker is Laurie Tedesco.
Hello, my name is Laurie Anne Conchetta-Tedesco. I live at 201 Fairfax Way. And as the previous gentleman has stated, I was from California, Hermosa Beach and Manhattan Beach, where they did the same darn things that y'all want to do and just keep raising, raising, raising those taxes. And it's not right. I'm a single woman on disability pay from the United States Air Force and on Social Security. So when you all go up $100, $200, $300, no, you're going to drive all of us out of here, and that's not right. So please rethink your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tedesco. Next is Phyllis Eastman.
I'm Phyllis Eastman, and I live at 142 Forts Colony Drive in James City County. I am coming on a Tuesday night to ask that you not vote for a 21% increase in taxes. I like to talk to a lot of people. And whenever I talk to someone and I tell them that you're increasing our taxes by 21%, they are stunned and unhappy. Who does, who gets hit by a 21% increase in taxes? Citizens of James City County. Every citizen who owns property in James City County gets hit. All economic groups in James City County get hit by a 21% increase in taxes. It's quite unbelievable. It really is. We are already faced with increasing, continually increasing costs just to live for electricity, sewer, water, food, transportation, medical, and dog grooming. You name it, we get an increase all the time. And here we are with a 21% increase in our taxes. Most people can't even believe that. I am saying to you, rework the budget. Get together and rework it, and don't come up with a 21% increase. Sometimes when I look at James City County and I look at the buildings being built, I think there's a competition by this board to make government buildings, better known as citizen-paid-for buildings, the most state-of-the-art buildings in James City County, rather than encouraging private building by private individuals who will pay for the building of the building, not the citizens of James City County. So I want you not to increase our taxes 21%. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Virginia Mainz.
I'm Virginia Mainz, 5408 Beverly Lane, Williamsburg. I've spent 40 years teaching reading to secondary students. I loved every minute of it, and I felt that I did a really good job. One of the things that distressed me was the kids did not go to the library because they were low readers. Low readers do not go to the library. That's it. During my long career as a, as a reading specialist, times changed. Things progressed. The kids didn't really need the library as much as they did before because technology came in. And it was quite a shock to me because I had to do a lot of catch-up. And all of a sudden, I knew what the kids felt when they didn't know how to read. Here in Virginia, we have a massive problem with reading and math scores. And the governor is doing his best to see that these problems are addressed. They will not be addressed by putting in another library. Since 2010, the use of libraries has decreased all over the country. And most of the libraries now find that their main use is public meetings. We have two absolutely gorgeous meeting rooms in, at Tuono and in CW. And that seems to meet the needs of most of what is needed right now. Another library would not do anything to help our kids. And all it would do is add to the number of people you get here complaining about your rise in taxes. Thank you.
My apologies to Ms. Lucy Espalat. Is that how you pronounce it? I skipped over you. Stuck together.
Good evening. I also want to state my opposition to this astronomical 21% property tax increase. But also the $189 million and the $50 million in new libraries. I often visit the, well, from time to time, visit the library in Williamsburg and the one in James City County. And I have to tell you, every time I've been there, the, all the computer stations, they're not being utilized. About half of the occupancy is there when I've been there. So it's hard for me to wrap my round, my head around the $50 million for a new library when the ones that we have now are not fully utilized. I am a broker in the Medicare health insurance business. And I help our seniors with making decisions on their healthcare plans, helping them navigate through the complexity of what Medicare is. Many of my clients, many of the people that I sit down with, complain about the expensive, how expensive everything is. They tell me that they're having a hard time meeting their monthly finances because for some people, their only means of income is their Social Security check. Social Security check is not very high for a lot of our seniors. And so they find themselves not being able to meet all of their monthly debt. They're paying for utilities, buying food or buying healthy food. And some of them have a hard time even paying co-pays when they seek medical attention. And so some of them forego getting certain treatments because they can't afford the portion that is their responsibility. I tell you, I moved to Colonial Williamsburg, Colonial Heritage in James City County as my retirement home. Since I've been there for four years, I keep seeing my property taxes increasing. And my mortgage payments keep increasing. And I'm still working. I'm not fully retired. But if I didn't have that extra income, I couldn't possibly afford to live here in James City County with my Social Security check. And of course, Social Security was never intended to be your only means of income. You have to prepare for the future. But even if I had my resources that I have invested in, I'm afraid that I couldn't make it here with as many things as you, all of you, make decisions on that negatively impact our finances. And I would ask you also if you would reconsider that 21% increase imposed on us going forward. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Stephen Mainz.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Mainz. I live at 3781 Captain Wind Drive in Williamsburg, James City County. And good evening, supervisors. I'm here to address what I think is a critical flaw in James City County's budget process, a process that has failed our community. I point out that with the greatest respect, that with one exception, you all have not run businesses. You've not balanced providing a better, more costly services against what customers can afford. You have not looked at what your competitors are offering and figured out how to become more competitive. You have never run a sale in order to increase revenue. That inexperience has harmed the county. It allowed a flawed process that delivered a flawed result. Budgeting is like a knapsack. And you pack, do you pack a bunch of small, less important items in first to get the greatest number in? Or do you prioritize essentials and fill in around it? Well, you filled the budget with everything but the big-ticket items like schools, knowing that in the end, you'd face pressure to fund raises by raising taxes. In budgeting, that's called gold watching. You underfund critical items, allowing yourself to show concern, all the while knowing that a constituency will force an increase. A small businessman would have budgeted big, important items first and displaced less important items because if they don't, they don't have the luxury of someone else paying the bill. The process failure started when you didn't send spending targets or give staff direction. You allowed the staff to spend every dollar from the higher property assessments, 21% this cycle, on top of 10% the cycle before. They spent it all. And now you're seeking even more revenue to cover what you call shortfalls. That's not the staff's fault. That's a failure of leadership. You didn't set priorities or a top-line budget, and we're left paying the price. You expect James City County citizens, 34% of whom are on public or private assistance, to pay for your spending. Our citizens, especially seniors and fixed, on fixed incomes and ALIS families, deserve to be able to stay in their homes. At your last meeting, just two weeks ago, when briefed on ALIS citizens' challenges, you praised the great work being done to protect the most vulnerable. You immediately then turned to how you could extract more taxes out of the citizens, maybe through a meals tax, an increased meals tax, actually. You've lost touch with those who can't afford to buy homes here and those like me whose first home was bought in this very county, not some overpriced northeastern city. Our citizens' pain isn't going away with a two-sand election-year tax credit. I respectfully ask that you set clear priorities. You establish a top-line budget. You start at the baseline and direct staff to bring options that meet those targets. You're running out of time. I know you've only got about 45 days. But it can be done. I ask you to put these enormous bond issues like for county offices and a new library before the people in a referendum so they have a say in our requirements and our ability to pay. Stop pushing the burden onto those who can least afford it. Prioritize the schools and give the staff clear direction, not a blank check. James City County citizens are depending on you, and they are not your safety net. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Can we keep the clapping and all that down?
I would appreciate it if you would. People are allowed to have their opinions. And if you would like to applaud them afterwards outside, it would be fine with me.
Number, next is Mr. Ted Hoover.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening.
We got there.
I can't follow Mr. Mainz with anything more credible than what I heard him say today. I come from the corporate world, a senior officer at a $150 billion insurance company, $1.2 billion insurance company, too. And I would have my career handed to me if I didn't look and spend with sensitivity to the customers. You all watch the TV ads. You know what you see about insurance companies. It's all about price. It's all about money. It's all about the dollars. We try to sell, say that we sell price, product, and service. But the simple fact is, price comes first. You have to plug your product and service into it because that's the expectation. I have an OAR chart here that I saw in your budget, updated here in March of this year. I'm a man who built my reputation as best I could by a process to first seek to understand so that you can be understood. I'm not seeing evidence of that here. What I am seeing is that there's an effort to put forth something that you need or want or think you need, but you haven't really explored the consequences adequately. Nor have you explored the options adequately. Or if you have, you haven't been transparent about it so that we can explore them with you. Democracy is an environment where you elect people to help you govern, not to be governed by you. We live this. We love this. It's the defining characteristic of our country and the places that we live. But this OAR chart says that we are at the top. How many of you here would reflect honestly at some point, quiet time or in prayer, and say to yourselves, "I don't think the residents think that they are at the top"? So I don't want your legacies as supervisors in this county to be ones of unpleasant memories of people standing before you concerned and upset. I'm sure you're dedicated people. But you're missing the mark. You have a president, like him or not, who knows how to run a business because we haven't learned how to run our country. Let's try to emulate some of the better qualities of sitting down, listening to what people are saying. They're not always right. That's not the point. The point is, is that you become aware. And I'm not sure your awareness levels are reflected in your actions. I can't see them. And I struggled with whether I was going to stand here and say anything or even come forward to speak. And then I thought to myself, "Well, I'm still trying to understand. I'm still seeking to try to understand. Why is the news media reporting on these astronomical increases? Why aren't we thinking about, if we're thinking forward five years, where will we be if not prepared to be competitors"? People come to live in places by choice, not, not because they're told to go there. Are people coming here? Somebody said the population increases boomed. Well, I did the math on your own charts. You've got, what, 7,000 people residences increased in the last five years? That's not a lot for a county that supposedly is attractive as we say we are. We don't have student increases either. They look pretty flat to the numbers I was looking at, relatively, again. So I'm back to that question. The numbers aren't supporting the actions. I think you've got a lovely campus here. Someone said this is 50 years old. You've got to get rid of it. Well, I'm sure glad they didn't do that with American University where I went to college, which is 180 years old. which is 180 years old. But they found a way. They figured it out. You've got a university right up the road here. I didn't see them tearing down 300-year-old buildings. But technology is alive and well at William &amp; Mary. So there are things that just don't make sense, and that's what I'm asking you to do. Take the time. Back off from this vote. Reassess. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just remind folks to give their address when they speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. 402-1 Coronation.
Thank you.
A. Mr. Chris Henderson.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. Got a lot to cover, so I'll try to do it as quickly as possible. Having attended board meetings for many years, I've always been troubled by the lack of a proper invocation at the beginning of our meetings. I think a prayer offered by a member of the clergy from the local community would be beneficial and set an appropriate tone for the deliberations that would occur. And so I would encourage this board to change its policy with regard to a formal invitation and adopt one and invite our local clergy to deliver it. Next, I'd like to reiterate my request that the start time of the meeting be pushed back at least an hour or two so that we can get better attendance, the current crowd notwithstanding. Obviously, people are upset about the budget and will express their will. But there's been many times where I've been the only speaker or there have been a handful. And the goal of local government should be to seek participation and input from the citizens and not to the exclusions of citizens. And a 5:00 PM start time is not a convenient time for members of our community who own businesses and have families. So I would ask again that you do that. It's median-cutting time again, and I want to make sure that the county is on top of that. That's what visitors see to our community when they drive along 199, Route 60 in Monticello. So I want to make sure that the administration is aware of that critical need as it reflects poorly on James City County when our medians are four feet tall and strewn with trash. Next up, I want to pass on to you a notice that I received from the Department of Health that was very disturbing about water quality in the Chickahominy River. I received in my inbox on Friday a message from the Department of Health that indicates that the consumption of fish from the Chickahominy River should be restricted to no more than two eight-ounce pieces per month. And this includes bass and sunfish and several other varieties of fish that have been tested over the last four years. And they contain dangerous levels of PFAS. And PFAS is a plastic derivative, but is also contained in fire foam. And somehow, that's gotten into our water supply. And now, the State Department of Health is putting a restriction on the type of fish and the quantity that should be consumed. And it's particularly dangerous for pregnant women and young children. So I would ask that the county put up on its website that notice from the Department of Health so that our citizens can be properly notified of this imminent health risk from the Chickahominy River. In the time remaining, I want to talk a little bit about your budget and your budget process. I would like to reiterate the comments that Mr. Maines made about the process and not setting a top-line budget and filling it full of wants and not needs. We don't need a new municipal complex today. That project started out, when you first started talking about it, at $90 million. Then it crept to $100 million. Then, well, cost increases and the scope of the project, it was $140 million. Now it's $184 million. And that doesn't include the tens of millions of dollars and necessary road improvements in order to make Dupuy Way appropriate to accommodate the traffic that's coming. So we're looking at a project with the library that's over $250 million. We can't afford it. I hate to tell you. And if you want to pursue it, I'd suggest that you ask the voters and put it to a referendum and see if they approve. But you're not going to do that. I'm not stupid. I can see it in your faces. You don't have the courage to put the issue to the voters and let them decide whether or not that's a good use of public money or not. I hope you prove me wrong. I really do. I hope you prove me wrong. But we can't afford $250 million. And we can't afford $500 million in capex in the next five years for a population of 80,000 people. That's insanity. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Robert Mandrioli.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Robert Mandrioli. I live at 3432 Westham Lane in Toono. Over the past few months, we've been witnessing a breathtaking restructuring of the US government. It's been done by a group of businesspeople, people with business acumen, people who know what they're doing, people who have done this for a long period of time. And they're taking government by the horns and they're restructuring it to a point where they are getting rid of bloated government, bloated budgets, money that's been wasted, money that's been thrown away. I mean, do you realize that we have been borrowing as a country? We have been borrowing money to give it away. So these people have taken it upon themselves to try to get their government, the budgets, the programs, the departments to run right, to run lean and to represent the people. In the many comments that I've received across the county, one thing I've noticed that I have not really heard anybody address, and that is, you people aren't listening. Sure, you hear the comments that are being made this evening, and you hear the comments that people send to you. I understand you received a ton of email over the last day or so over the budget. But are you really listening to the people? The point I'm trying to make this evening is that if you really are paying attention, you will see that the budget as proposed, $200 million irrespective of how well-intended it may be, is something that the population does not want. This is not good business practice. This is not the kind of government that we elected. And why do I say this? Because I have a business, too. And I have to pay close attention to the people who are unhappy, dissatisfied, disenchanted with my products, with my service, with my delivery. But I have to pay even closer attention to the people who never complained, never come back, never buy my products again, but make sure that their friends, family, business associates, and everyone on the internet knows why. I and several thousands of people in James City County have every intention of watching this vote. And we're going to be paying close attention to the dissenting votes on this board as to who is willing to pass this budget and who is not. Because those dissenting votes are the people that we will be supporting in the coming elections. Thank you.
Mr. Jerry Ricks.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start off by thanking the supervisors for all their exhausting time and service trying to manage this county and all these hundreds of millions of dollars. It's very, very admirable. However, I'd like to say that I don't think you're managing our taxes and our expenditures and our budget properly. There's been a number of speakers who have talked about the exact numbers. What struck me the most preparing for this is graphs like this, which show over a 600% increase.
Can you make your remarks to the board, please? Thank you.
Pardon?
Just make sure you make your remarks to the board.
Okay, okay. Thank you. The budget is too big. The increase is too big. The taxes are going to be much too high. It's not worth it. This is a gamble. You're pursuing a gamble. We're talking about need versus want? Well, that's certainly what we're seeing. We're seeing a need. I mean, a want that is being promoted. And you know, I work a lot with a merry band of conservatives in this county. And we walk around and talk and have meetings. And guess who is agreeing with us these days? Many, many liberals in this county are agreeing that, "My gosh, what's happening to my assessments? What's happening to my taxes? The increases are too much. The retirees on fixed incomes are really going to be hurt." My retirement is certainly not going up by these same percentages. I don't have children. Most of us seniors don't have children in the schools. That always bothers me. I've paid plenty of taxes for schools. I don't need to be paying taxes for the schools now. These increases should be voted on by the citizens of the county. Also, as has been pointed out with people who are smarter than I am with construction, you've got target numbers. You've got estimates. When it's all said and done, you're going to spend more than what you've got up on the board now. That's just the way it is. Trying to bring things under budget is extremely hard, especially these days when the price of labor and materials is so unpredictable. And who knows? There may be some emergency. There may be a COVID. There may be a major reason for our people have to work from home, county employees, in fact, teachers, in fact. We can't predict that. If that happens, the usage of these, what will, I'm sure, will be beautiful facilities, they'll be underutilized. And then people are going to wonder. Just like I saw in Washington, DC, when I saw these gold-plated agency buildings being put up, no cost, no concern about how much. And I walked through every day as part of my job through so many agencies. And the cubicles were empty. The computers were not being used. And there were just construction people walking all over for years, continuing to build while they're trying to work. So keep all that in mind. Do something to make the voters proud of you. Thank you for your time.
Susan Franz, next speaker.
Terry Ricks, 2561 William Taker Drive.
Susan Franz.
Good evening. My name is Susan Franz. My address is 103 Cardinal Court. I'm here tonight to dispel the notion that there are a bunch of rich come-hers who can afford the property tax increase. Because my understanding is that's kind of a general sentiment that's taken place that has affected how you deliberate about the property tax increase. And I'd like to just say that I'm really concerned, especially, I agree with all the previous comments regarding the new government building, the new library, all of that. And I just wanted to speak to you about the seniors in our area. I personally know two widows who lived on fixed incomes. Now, one of them lives in Ford's Colony. So you would drive past her house and think, "Oh, well, sure, that lady can afford the property tax increase." Well, there's a lot of situations that have come up in her life. And she is now living on a very, very limited income. She can't bring in any more income. She's not able to work. She has huge medical expenses. And this property tax is going to be a huge burden to her. Being able to get out of Ford's Colony and into something else as affordable is a huge burden. So just because we drive around and we see these beautiful homes in these fancy communities and we think that there's all these rich people who are able to afford this, that's not the case. Some of those people, really, behind closed doors, can't. And then you do have the real people who can't afford it anyway. I have another friend who's a neighbor in my neighborhood, not fancy schmancy gated community. And she's a widow as well. She has to work part-time in order to cover her expenses. She has a car that needs to be replaced. If her car breaks down, she won't be able to get back and forth to work to cover her expenses. Property tax at this size is going to sink her. Those are just two people that I know of in my personal relationships. And I know that they are all over the place here, not to mention just your average, everyday family who's trying to work and put food on the table for their kids. But I just, in my own heart, I have a special place for seniors. So when I talk with them and I hear their struggles, it really hurts to think about these people who are really going to be struggling. And they don't have the ability, because of their age, to get out and work, you know, get a second gig or whatever in order to bring in extra income. So I just ask that you would consider this. And I do agree, there needs to be a referendum. The citizens need to have a say in what is happening here. Nobody asked for all this stuff that is in this budget. So I really implore you to consider doing a referendum. And please remember that just because there's a lot of beautiful gated communities with gargantuan homes, those are really just the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot more people here who are really struggling under the burdens of what's happening in our economy. And this property tax would just be abominable to them. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is George Hudgens.
Good evening. I'm George Hudgens. I've lived at 203 Le Main for the past 44 years. I want to speak to the proposed tax increase, 21% tax increase. It harms seniors and on fixed income, and it harms the working poor. 34% of our county residents are receiving some sort of public or private assistance according to the United Way. Taxes cause an economic shock in each of those instances. It also makes our county less competitive for business. Increasing the tax rate along with assessments is a double whammy. I ask that you consider that in your proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Margaret McGuire.
Thank you, Margaret McGuire, 137 Sugar Bush, Williamsburg. Over the past many months, I have heard in this room and read online all kinds of eloquent and forceful explanations about why we do not need a new government center at this time. We do not, we can't afford it. And my request to you all is, please listen to the people that you represent. This is not the time for that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Mark Kane. Next speaker is Mark Kane.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Mark Kane. I'm at 4003 East Providence Road. I am a property owner there. My comments are directed at the proposed 21% real estate increase. I have to say, I'm very disappointed in this proposal. One of the things that needs to be considered is that homeowners are being hit with very large increases in home maintenance costs due to inflation. I recently replaced a roof. I'm told that three years ago, it had been roughly half the price that I just paid a couple of months ago. So that's an example of just outrageous inflation that we're looking at just to maintain a property. So I just believe that adding a 21% real estate tax is unreasonable. The path to increased revenues to JCC should be attracting industries that pay taxes based on capital investment. Hire talented economic development personnel and bring industries to the county. That's the way to grow the tax base. A new admin building is not necessary. If more space is necessary for admin, open satellite offices around town and occupy some of the unused retail and office space. Large-scale, architecturally pleasing edifices are wasteful spending of taxpayer dollars. With zero growth projections, there's no need to increase spending in education. Decrease education spending by reducing educational admin cost. There is no reporting that indicates the benefit of having the oversized educational admin that we have today. The current plan does not promote growth in the tax base. CW and Busch Gardens are not producing the expected revenues, and the citizens of JCC are subsidizing Anheuser-Busch's water usage. So we need to hire experts who can work on water and utility cost solutions. Thanks for your time.
Next speaker is Mr. John Slocovitz.
Good evening. My name is John Slocovitz, 109 Hempstead Road, and I would just like to reiterate the things that Mr. Maines and Mr. Henderson have gone through. So you guys note that on your sheet, because there are only three reasons why I should, why we should be in this position that we are in now. Looking down the barrel of a huge budget and impending spending deficit. Reason number one is being that the people on this board were, let's just say, less than ambitious in being able to plan out a future that could be sustained through its residents. Because this plan cannot be sustained. Number two is that you don't understand the borrowing and spending and how taxation works. And this happened, and what happens when you borrow too much and the people begin to leave this county? Or three, that this is actually maliciously intended outcome, and that you knew all along where this would end up. I'm hoping there's a fourth reason, which I'm not privy to, that this board will come to a decision and look into. I am, in fact, a transplant and a recovering New Yorker, and take offense to the comments made about my fellow refugees. I left my entire family and sacrificed everything I know to make a better life for my wife and my four small children. I was working as a mechanic in the plumbers' union and could barely make ends meet in our small apartment that we rented in New York City. After moving down here, we found a great home that needed a lot of work. People call it sweat equity. And now I'm looking at a home that I could have actually made some money on, and that is now instead going to drain my bank account with increased property assessments and looming tax burdens. I moved here to enjoy what I have left in my life and to see my kids and grandkids thrive and build a future for their families that will have a lasting impact here in Jame City County. You might say, how great it is that my house is now worth so much more than I paid for it. The problem is that my family and I have fallen in love with the home that we have built, and I do not want to have to pack up my family again to escape the great governmental overreach. So if you offer me the choice of selling, so now you offer me a choice of either selling a home I built with my own blood, sweat, and tears, one that I have poured my children's love and lives into, or work myself to death to simply make ends meet. The people that live in this community do not want to live in Newport News, and that is exactly what you're promising happens to us here if you continue down this path. It seems as though we are in a race with the city of Williamsburg to the bottom. If we simply go tit-for-tat with them on who can overspend and recklessly build just to build, we will both lose. We will find ourselves in a county with great amenities but one which no one can afford to live in. Furthermore, I own a small business in which my wife and I have put our time, hard work, and all of our earned money into. When taxes go up and money gets tight, people cut out things that they want to do around the house, and that affects my bottom line. My business would end up suffering, which in turn would result in further loss of money for me and many struggling mom-and-pop shops and small businesses around town. We have all seen the bar graphs and projections that the Williamsburg Watch and other investigative publications have printed of how every one of the localities around us is doing way more with much less. And our solution here has been to throw good money at bad, or even more appropriately, bad money at worse money. My request today is that for you to either reevaluate your stance and the direction this board is taking, or to offer the community a referendum, one that we, the people, can decide on what does or does not happen with our own money. Thank you.
Next is Eppen. I'll pronounce the name. I'm sorry. Is it Patulio McMahon? McMahon? Last name? McMahon.
Thank you.
There you go.
Meow. Yeah, here, after you talk, I'm all the time. My name is Patrick McMahon, and I happen to reside at 609 Riverblows here in Kingsmill. And I'm here in front of you fine people to tell you a story about my youngest son who was in the Navy. As a supply corps officer, he had to get him a series of stopwatches for the captain. He decided that there was no time to get him through the Navy supply system, bought him on his own. The old man asked him for the paperwork. None was available because since he purchased him on his own dime, he provided the captain what he needed. Bottom line was, the captain said to him, "Son, before you spend my money, let me know." And so I am saying, we need a referendum, not only to let us know about this series of projects, but it also provides 25 basis points of a lower interest rate in terms of paying something back if people do decide to go for that level of insanity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Rebecca Smith-Winnis. Rebecca Smith-Winnis.
Good evening. Rebecca Smith-Winnis, 5515 West Moreland Drive in the West Moreland Community. So I'd like to echo a lot of the comments that were already made, but I'd like to do that from my own personal perspective. I've never done anything like this before, speak in front of a board of supervisors, but I felt it monumentally important for me to express my concern, albeit my alarm, regarding the vote that is to take place to approve the last part of the 21% property tax increase. I moved here four years ago from New Jersey, and I lived in a modestly priced home there. And I want to emphasize that because, as you've heard some comments, I think there is a prevailing attitude among individuals or an individual here that everybody that came from New Jersey and New York was the wealthy and made a killing when they sold their homes. That is just not true. That is wrong thinking. I know dozens of families that left New Jersey, and they lived in very modestly priced homes, and they were not thriving in that environment because you cannot. The wealthy elite is a very small percentage in New Jersey and New York. So as a retired senior, maintaining a good quality of life in New Jersey would have been very difficult, if not impossible. Do I have what I consider a good quality of life here? Yes. But I live on a very strict budget. I've had to make some unpleasant adjustments recently in the last couple of years. Just some personal for instances. I did away with my landline, my phone line. Can I do without it? Well, yeah. But at the age of 71, I would feel better with a landline as opposed to just having my cell. I've done away with cable TV. Again, not critical, but you know what? I really would enjoy having some of the entertainments that cable TV offered. But as prices have gone up on everything, property taxes, car insurance, on and on and on, I've had to reduce my monthly expenditures. So I've had to take a really hard look at my budget. I live on Social Security. Now, full disclosure, yes, I do have some small investments. I worked for 45 years. But at 71, God willing, I may live for another 25 years, hopefully, maybe longer. And that money has got to last. No children, no family. I'm on my own. So I have to be very, very frugal. With large property tax hikes in notable amounts, utilities maybe going up about 8%, I'm being priced out of my home here. The home that I left where I was barely surviving, could not thrive, came here, felt that I would have a great way of life, and in a home that I will be in or plan to be in to my final day. And with all the increases that are going on in the proposed 21%, gee, my Social Security increased last year 2.3%. 2.3%. Everything is outpacing my income. I am very, very personally fearful for the rest of my life. Now, you think that maybe my situation is different from most here, but no, it's very common and every day becoming more prevalent. A lot of senior couples moved here to retire. The unexpected happens, as it happened to me, one of them dies. I lost my husband a year after I moved here. And that usually negatively impacts the household income. It's not uncommon. And it's becoming more and more a part of your population here because so many people, so many couples did come here. Nobody lives forever. You have a lot of widows. I personally now know a large group of them, and they're struggling. Now, should you be concerned about this? Yes, you should. These are the people, me, that pay your salaries. And to make decisions that are just, appropriately, and ethically correct, you need to be very concerned about how your decisions impact our quality of your life while on your watch. So in closing, I would ask each of you to sharpen your pencils. Maybe there are some areas that can be trimmed down instead of large property tax increases. Or maybe there are some things that are on the want-to-have list that are not on the critically important list.
Ma'am, if you could wind up, please. You're out of your time.
Thank you. And that can be eliminated or put off for a time. So finally, I would just ask you to employ a prudent conscience to lead you to right judgment and moral decision-making in this and all matters that you have charge over. Thank you.
Next speaker is Whit Derby.
I am Whit Derby, and I own a home at 2976 Riverreach here in Williamsburg. This is the first time I have come to attend a board meeting. And the reason I did so is because I was looking at so much of social media feeds in the community with comments about what's going on with the budget and with tax increases. And based on everything you've heard here this evening, and I don't think it's the word common, more like consternation amongst the folks in this community about what's taking place. I'd like to point out a couple of things just to keep in the back of your minds as you consider going forward. First of all, as you increase the property taxes across the board here in the community, you are taking money out of the purchasing power of the people who live here, and you're taking it out of the business community who's going to be the beneficiary of that money. So you're taking a transfer of wealth away from the businesses in the community that you serve, and you're going to put it into these government services. And that's going to hurt businesses in this community. That's first of all. Second of all, you're going to hurt the property values by increasing the taxes, right? It's just like increasing interest rates. The value of a bond goes down. The same thing is going to take place. You increase the value of the property taxes, you are going to put an end to the increase in these higher valuations that have been taking place in here. Do it again next year, and you're going to see it come out. Now, first of all, if you just take a look at, take a time to look at Zillow, it looks like a Fourth of July display. There are so many spots of homes that have come onto the market. Take a look at how long these homes now are on the market. There are properties that are on the market that have sold historically in the past quite quickly in communities that are now six months, seven months, right? So these values that you're looking at as you're saying, this is the value of these properties, okay? They're not the values that can be reached in the sale of 60 days or 90 days. They're sitting out six months, nine months now at these values. So these values that you've used for appraisers are not going to be that. And as people get independent people to appraise their homes, those appraisers are going to take into consideration how long a duration it is to sell a home. That's also going to take into place. And so the other thing you should really think about is the demographics, okay? What pushed these prices higher in the first place, okay? You had a COVID bump, so you had this basically unusual demand of everybody coming at one time that had been previously held back. That's part of it. You've had inflation that's hit people. That's part of what's driven the prices higher. But you also had demographics. You had a backwind in the Baby Boomers, and I am the caboose on the Baby Boomer community, okay? After me, there's nobody on that train, okay? For the next 15 years, you could look at the demographics. For the next 15 years, the number of people that are behind me drops, okay? With one little bump in the middle of that, by 200,000, every single year, it gets lower and lower and lower, okay? We go from about 2.5 million to about 1.8 million people. That's the demographics of what's taking place for the next 15 years. And so the number of people who are going to come next to buy homes will not be what you saw in front of you. And so if you think about the budget and you think about what you're going to spend in the future, you have to take in consideration that you can't continue to raise taxes or appraise values on homes because they're not going to be sustainable, because there's going to be less demand. Already, you're seeing it with the duration of how long homes are sitting on the market in order to take place. So please keep that in mind, right? These are fundamental things. Now, I'll tell you, I spent my career and my life on Wall Street, all right, working on fixing companies that have gone bankrupt. That's where I'm quite familiar with the 10 worst practices of what management does in order to basically drive a business into the ground. And also municipalities, right? Don't think municipalities don't go bankrupt. Atlantic City worked on that. So I would like to point out to you, okay, that in almost all those cases across the board, what happened? Why did those companies fail? Because they made bad decisions. They spent money at the worst possible time, okay? They spent too much on projects that didn't really meet the needs of where their core business was, and they did it at the worst of times, right? And I think in that regard, you've got to think about what's ahead of us. We're looking at times that could be recessionary. More likely than not, that might be in the future, closer than most people think because of the disruption that's taken place. So you're going to have to think all this through. But anyway, I wish you guys the best luck in your decision on this thing. But, you know, common sense would tell you that maybe refraining is the way to go.
Next speaker is Mr. Mike Joseph.
Good evening. My name is Mike Joseph. I live at 6631 Rexford Lane here in Williamsburg. So I'm here tonight to ask you to delay this budget. It has the 21% increase in our tax rate. And I think that that needs to be reassessed, just like the other people pointed out. Two things that strike me about the cost, the capital expenditures for Two things that strike me about the cost, the capital expenditures for a new admin building and a new library. I think that if that has to happen, why do we have to have an all-brand-new facility? Why don't we, let's see, use current buildings that we have available and avoid costs, new costs at these inflationary rates we have? By the words, you take an old building, you're using old, they're valued at old money. So if you minimize, maximize that and minimize new costs at inflated rate, they should get something for less money. In other words, they get more bang for the buck. But I think we have a lot of vacancies that we're going to use and repurpose buildings, just like you see on the ATV. They're always repurposing houses for a lot less money, and they come out really nice. And so if we have to do that, we need to repurpose older buildings. And the other thing is, why do we need one big new facility for the county? All the departments don't have to be all in this one big new building. We can, I'm sure there are departments that can be, work independently of the other departments and make, maybe have what we have now. And any expansion would be in smaller buildings and maybe, like I say, repurpose buildings. So I think we need to consider how we spend our money and get more bang for the buck. And the other thing is, when we have these large capital expenditures, like $50 million or $190 million, they should be on a referendum. It's a large investment, and it's not, it goes beyond just normal operating costs. So I would say we need to reconsider the budget. And any big capital expenditure should be on referendum. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And our last speaker is Mr. Steve Corcoran.
Good evening. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak. I just noticed that there has been no speaker who's come up and asked for a tax increase. But I won't be the first, so.
If you could give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, Steve Corcoran. I reside at 133 Greensway Robertsby. I'm here to express my concerns over the proposed 2026 budget with its 21% increase on top of the previous 11% increase. This multi-year increase is excessive, in my opinion. So I have a few observations. One, this is previously expressed by a good number of people, these tax increases are onerous for those on fixed income. Secondly, the tax increase calls into question the budgeting process and budget priorities of the Board of Supervisors. So hopefully, the board will reconsider what is a reasonable tax increase and make disciplined budget choices. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That finishes our speakers for this evening with a public comment. And we now move to our consent calendar. On tonight's consent calendar, the following items: we have a budget appropriation for proffered stormwater funds, $120,000; a budget appropriation of proffered transportation funds, $511,759; a contract award, $206,800 for James City County Fire Station 4 energy recovery ventilator replacement; and number four, dedication of streets in the Burlington Woods subdivision. If anyone wishes to pull an item, if I do not, I'll have a motion for the consent.
I'll move the consent calendar. Nobody must.
We have a motion for the consent calendar. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Okay, we are now down to our public hearings. Our planning commission representative for this evening is Mr. Jay Averson. I believe he's around here somewhere. There he is, okay. And our first public hearing is SUP 24-0034, 7649 Cypress Drive Rental of Rooms. Mr. Terry Costello to give the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Ms. Sharon Elliott has applied for a special use permit to allow the operation of the rental of rooms at 7649 Cypress Drive. The rental of rooms, SCP, will allow for the short-term rental of one bedroom within the existing three-bedroom residence. The property is Zoned A1, general agricultural, is designated rural lands in the comprehensive plan, and is located outside the primary service area, as are all surrounding parcels. Staff consider the home location, parking provisions, and that the owner will reside on-site during the time of the rentals to be favorable factors in the evaluation of this application. The property has an existing driveway and parking area sufficient to accommodate guests. Staff is recommending conditions which are intended to mitigate the impacts of the use and preserve the residential character of the home. Such conditions include limitations on the number of rooms rented and the total number of rental occupants per stay. Staff notes that there was a previously approved special use permit for a rental of rooms, which expired due to a condition not being met within the required timeframe. While staff believes that this location is generally considered appropriate for this use, staff finds that the proposal is not fully consistent with the comprehensive plan recommendation for short-term rentals. Therefore, staff cannot recommend approval. Should the Board of Supervisors wish to approve this application, staff has included conditions for consideration. At the April 2nd Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this SCP by a vote of five to one. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff?
So does the, do they plan to get this certificate of occupancy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Averson from the Planning Commission report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application came back to the Planning Commission, now to this board because of misunderstanding with the owner regarding the CO. The commission supported this application because of all the basic site conditions were met, parking owners lived there, and also because the site had previously been approved. And as she mentioned, the vote was five to one. It was not very big discussion, it kind of went right through.
Any questions for Mr. Averson?
Can I ask who, why there was one vote against? For what reason?
You're looking at him.
I know I'm looking at him. I want to know why.
Well, I voted against for a couple of reasons. One, the issue about the comprehensive plan. It wasn't on our tour road, and it was in towards the subdivision. And I have a problem with home-based businesses that have a parking requirement, because that, to me, starts sounding like a neighborhood business. It's one thing to have a home business where, like my wife does, where she does academic coaching on Zoom. No customers ever come to our house, and I, one of the reasons I don't support Airbnb's.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff, Mr. Averson? Okay. I'll open the public hearing, and we have one speaker card from Ms. Sharon Elliott.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Elliott. I reside at 7649 Cypress Drive in Lenexa. I'm the applicant for a special use permit to operate a short-term rental of a space in my home where I reside. I previously stood before you at the September 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting, where the board graciously approved my request for an SUP to operate my short-term rental. Since your approval, I have successfully operated the rental with no issues, and I have updated letters from my neighbors indicating their continued support. I was aware that there were requirements attached to the SUP, one of which is a compliance review by 2025 November. As another requirement, I obtained a business license. I began submitting monthly transient occupancy taxes to the Commissioner of Revenue. Also, as required, in October, I'm sorry, in August 2024, I submitted a copy of my business license to planning. I received a response asking also if I had my CO. I wasn't sure what a CO was, but when I found out, I replied that, yes, I obtained a CO when I built my house 15 years ago, and I asked if that's what they meant. And if not, then please provide me with the phone number so I can contact them to see what else was required. I never received a response, and I incorrectly assumed that all was well. In November 2024, I received a letter stating my SUP was void because I did not provide the CO. I did some more research and found that although I had a CO, I needed an updated CO. I immediately applied for the updated CO on permit number builder 241135. Building Safety and Permits began the review, but stopped when they realized my SUP was voided. I reached out to zoning and requested an extension of my SUP while I worked on obtaining the updated CO. Although they apologized for missing my email where I requested a phone number, they stated that there was nothing that they could do, and there was no one in the whole county who had the authority to extend my SUP. A failure to obtain the CO was a misunderstanding on my part, not an attempt to circumvent the SUP requirements. Zoning stated that my only recourse was to start all over and apply for a new SUP, which is what I did. So here I am again. Thank you for your consideration, and do you have any questions?
Applicant? Thank you, ma'am. We have a speaker card, so close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion in our motion. Motion for approval? We have a motion for approval? Any other discussion? Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please. Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll? Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next public hearing is SUP 24-0032, 232 Lakeview Drive Contractors Office Equipment Storage Yard. Mr. Jose Rivera to give the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of supervisors, thank you. Mr. James Beaver of Williamsburg Contracting LLC has applied for a special use permit to allow for a contractor's office and storage of vehicles and equipment on this property located at 232 Lakeview Drive. The property is on A1, general agricultural, and designated by the comprehensive plan as rural lands and community character conservation, open space, or recreation. A contractors' office and warehouse storage requires a special use permit in A1 zone districts. Mr. Beaver currently operates his business without the required SUP. If approved, this SUP application submitted by Mr. Beaver will bring the land use of his property in compliance with current zoning regulations. The area where the outdoor storage is currently located borders Little Creek Reservoir and its associated 100-feet resource protection area buffer. To ensure that the outdoor storage area does not encroach onto the RPA, the applicant contracted with the company to have the RPA delineated. Based on delineation, the storage area is located outside the 150 RPA area. Therefore, there is no need to have this property further evaluated by the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, Preservation Area. Please refer to attachment number six to your staff report for the RPA delineation full report. The site is designated rural lands and community character conservation, open space, or recreation on the comprehensive plan land use map. Appropriate primary uses in the rural lands include activities such as traditional agricultural, forestal activities, and farming. However, appropriately scaled and located directly agricultural or forestal support uses, home-based occupations, or certain uses which require very low intensity settings relative to the site in which it will be located, may be considered in a case-by-case review. While it is not an agricultural or forestal use, staff finds the proposed scale of the business to be a very low, a low-intensity operation, which would not negatively impact the natural and rural character of the area. For the community character conservation, open space, or recreation designation, land uses that are most appropriate are those that currently contribute to the rural, historic, and scenic character of James City County. Other properties that are appropriate for this designation are those that provide buffers to historical sites and environmentally sensitive areas such as reservoirs, natural heritage resources, educational resources, and areas for recreation and enjoyment. For this particular property, the community character conservation, open space, or recreation designation function as a protection to further protect sensitive environmental areas such as Little Creek Reservoir. Currently, the entire, the entirety of the commercial operation associated with this SUP application is located within the conservation, open space designation. Although the current use of this area is not consistent with the intent of the comp plan designation, the use has already been established in this area since 2019. Further, SUP conditions such as condition number four, which prohibits parking, storage of equipment, indoor vehicles, indoor additional soil disturbance within 15 feet of the RPA buffer area, and condition number 11, which limits the number of vehicles associated with the project that can be parked on the site, ensure that the areas subject to this SUP will not expand further into the conservation and recreational area. Additional proposed new condition number 12 prohibits further development within this comprehensive plan designation. At its April 2, 2025 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this special use permit application to the Board of Supervisors by a vote of six to zero. Staff finds the proposed use does not negatively impact surrounding property or development, nor is expected to negatively impact roads or other public services. Staff finds that this proposal is consistent with the zoning ordinance and generally consistent with the rural lands designation of the comprehensive plan. Staff finds that the use is generally inconsistent with the intent of the community character conservation, open space, or recreation designation. Staff recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve this SUP application, subject to the proposed conditions. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also in attendance and willing to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Rivera?
Question, one, the area that's proposed, how, will that be recorded onto the property? And since, since this, the SUP carries with the property, not the owner?
That's correct.
So that'll be, will that be recorded at the courthouse on the deed of the property that this is all, not, not for the owner that's there now, but for somebody who may buy it later and think, well, we've got this extra area, we'll just expand this? So will that be recorded on a deed in the courthouse that this is the only spot on that land that can be used for this SUP?
I don't believe so.
Okay, would that be? That would almost be something I would think we should recommend as far as, because I can see 20 years down the road, all the board members are gone, and staff's gone, and all of a sudden, this grows into a bigger thing that could affect the neighbors. But if that's the only spot they're going to use, then it may be something that could be recorded in the deed that there's an SUP on this piece of property, and this is the area that can be used for that SUP. So, you know, and not saying anybody's going to do anything negative, but just over time, things grow, you know, things get bigger, and, you know, and it's the way things go. And next thing you know, I was here, and a couple more feet, and a couple more feet, and.
The only thing that I can tell you is that, again, based on the condition, particular condition number 12, it just plainly states that no development with, is no further development within the area that's currently designated as a recreation.
Right.
So that's what we have in our conditions.
I just wonder at times with some of these, if it, if it puts more burden on staff as far as, you know, because in 10 years from now, most of the staff that worked on it may be retired, and then new staff come in and won't know what's going on. They can go back and read it and all that, but then, you know.
Sure. One of my, one of my experiences has been that with, particularly with cases such as rezonies and SUPs, but that we, we know we do research extensively, especially the history of the case, so that we have a good understanding and good footing as you make a recommendation.
Because when it's a whole piece of property, then. Because when it's a whole piece of property, then, you know, you, you know that piece of property's got an SUP, but when it's, you know, a piece of a piece of property, it makes it a little more difficult just to track, so. Okay.
I also know that from discussions with the applicant, the reasons why they have the location of the storage where it is, it's actually behind the house, and you cannot see it from there right away. I think they have a three-acre or more than three-acre property, and they could have put it somewhere else, but they chose it there because it stays away from, from, from view, and it's very, it's very concentrated. Thank you. You're very welcome.
Okay, we'll hear from Mr. Everson from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one that came back to us in April. We had discussed it in, in, I believe it was March. In fact, you can't see it from the road. I had to drive past it to see it, and it screened. There was, basically, there was really no discussion either previous about the plan itself. The big issue was the RPA. It had not been delineated, and in the meantime, from first hearing until April, it had been clearly delineated, it was clearly outside of it. And the other thing that they did was they're going to have some kind of a catch thing under the vehicles in event of oil leaks, I gather, it's oil leaks or whatever, which was viewed very positively. So once the RPA issue was satisfied, the commission had zero problem with accepting this, this application, and we hope you two pass it because we agreed six oh.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing, and we have no cards, speaker cards, Mr. Everson. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion in our motion. Motion for approval. You have a motion for approval, Mr. Stevens.
Snoll.
Hi.
Mr. Hippel.
Hi.
Ms. Larson.
Hi.
Mr. McGlynn.
Hi.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay. Number three, SUP, pardon me, Z 24-0014 and MP 25-0001, Fort McGruder Mixed Use Resoning. Allison Jakura, is it Jakura?
Jakura, yes, sir.
Very good, to give the staff report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As noted, I am here to present rezoning 2414 and master plan 2501 for the property known as the Fort McGruder Hotel and Conference Center. It's approximately 9.25 acres at the addresses noted on the screen. Rezoning from B1, general business, to propose mixed use with proffers. You can see here on the screen the three properties that comprise the hotel. A long poke on his trail. If you could see the cursor, there it is. The properties are located at the jurisdictional boundary with the city of Williamsburg. So here's the city of Williamsburg, and you work over here, and this is the hotel existing. They are proposing to convert that existing hotel into 126 apartments with 32,000 square feet of commercial space. Forty percent of those residential units would be proffered to be affordable and workforce housing. They would be required to bring the existing landscape buffers to maintain them, but also to improve them with specific enhancements. The parking lot would be brought up to conformance with current requirements. For instance, landscape buffers or islands and handicap parking spaces would be improved. The stormwater facilities would also be enhanced. Notably, the total impervious surface would be reduced from 75% to about 70% on the property. And they are providing via proffer recreational amenities to include an in, indoor pool as well as an outdoor pool, fitness room, movie room, and gathering space, as well as 1.1 acres of open space. So to give you a little bit of orientation on the site, here is Pocahontas Trail. The residential 126 units would be here in this yellow-ish-orange color. The red highlighting would be the existing building that will be the commercial space. The two pools are here shown in blue that are existing to be retained. That open area is here kind of in the center. You'll note this kind of shaded color in the center. That is a civil or era war, Civil War era, excuse me, redoubt. So it's an existing earthen works above-ground historical site that is going to remain there in that open space. The existing buffer along the front, the current structures within that front buffer will be removed, or they're proposing to remove, and then they're expanding the landscaping here in the middle and enhancing selectively removing existing vegetation and planting enlarged new vegetation. Here is a proposed rendering of the front of that area. There's an existing canopy here that they're proposing to remove, indicated it's too low really for current use, and it would also allow them to improve the parking in this area. There's currently a roundabout that they're proposing instead to put parking spaces. Other than that, they're largely keeping the existing architecture of the building intact without major changes. This is a land use map showing that all of the properties on this side of Pocahontas Trail within the jurisdiction of the county are proposed to be mixed use as align, aligning with the proposed rezoning. These areas aren't shaded because they are the city of Williamsburg, so outside of our jurisdiction. Across from Pocahontas Trail and the railroad are low residential, low-density residential and commercial hubs. Staff, in analyzing this proposal, felt that it aligned with, or determined that it aligned with the 2045 comprehensive plan with respect to adaptive reuse of hotel space for providing workforce and affordable housing units. It does meet the codes and ordinances and would bring the existing property up into compliance. It passes all but one of the adapted policies related to fiscal impact schools, et cetera. The one policy of note is that parks and recreation facility guidelines. However, staff does note a couple extenuating circumstances with that. There is that Civil War redoubt, which does limit where they could potentially put a playground, and also the existing building and infrastructure and parking lot also further constrain where they could sight things on the property. And they are proffering additional amenities above what the guidelines, certain additional amenities, such as having two pools rather than one, and being very close to the Quarter Path Recreation. So with that, staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of rezoning 2414 and master plan 2501. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
I'd asked Ms. Jakura some questions about how the leases would be handled once the, as we were getting close to the end of the 20-year guarantee of affordability, and she provided us answers with that, that satisfied me. Thank you.
Okay, Planning Commission, or Mr. Everson?
Mr. Chairman, I will start off with this. A couple of us didn't even know that Fort McGruder was in the county. We thought it was in the city. It was, we got in trouble about that. They were, basically, it boiled down to a discussion of market rate versus affordable rates, and they kind of explained it, it kind of complicated, but I guess there was going to be affordability for three levels, if I understand it correctly. There was a question regarding retention of the restaurant. Yes, they're going to keep it. And I got to tell you, the Williamsburg Battlefield Association was very concerned about that redoubt, and it's going to stay for all you Civil War reenactors, et cetera. And basically, the commission thought this is a great reuse for this land rather than have the hotel continue to fall apart. And consequently, six oh. I'm sure there's no questions for me on this one.
Questions for Mr. Everson? Okay. Okay. We will open the public hearing, and I have three speaker cards. Our first speaker is Vernon Getty for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Vernon Getty of 1177 Jamestown Road. Pleasure to be here tonight representing the applicant, Conserve Holdings. Also here, hiding in the back, is Jason Grimes with AES Engineers. Walter Parks Architects are the designers, and we use Grove Sway to do the traffic work on the case. Conserve Holdings is a real estate investment company that focuses on multifamily properties in the mid-Atlantic, Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina. They're based in Tom's River, New Jersey, and are led by David Walken and Steve Fuchs. They're an experienced owner-operator of multifamily property here in the county and actually own the adjacent apartment complex you saw on the slide that Allison showed. Fort McGruder Inn was built actually in 1976, and for many years was a thriving hotel conference center. Unfortunately, for a number of years now, the property has struggled and has been severely underutilized. It's been for sale for a while, and it's under contract now with Conserve Holdings. You've seen the neighborhood picture shot. These are some pictures I took the day before the Planning Commission meeting. I know you're all probably familiar with it, but you can see the stockade. This is the first entrance, if you're coming from the city toward Busch Gardens. Moving on, there are a couple of things you'll notice in here. Let me get my finger working. There's some very attractive landscaping on the property that will be enhanced with this proposal. The other thing is, this is on a Tuesday afternoon where a lot of people were in town, and there are two cars in the parking lot, one of which was mine. So Conserve Holdings proposes to rezone the property to mixed use to allow the conversion that Allison described. It's the adoptive reuse of an aging and underutilized property through a multimillion-dollar renovation to provide quality, affordable workforce and market-rate housing in commercial space, which we think would be a great benefit to the county and the community at large. The fact that this is a renovation and adoptive reuse of an existing property rather than a greenfield development is one of the great benefits and strengths of the proposal, but it did create a number of challenges under the existing zoning ordinance, and we'd like to thank staff for working with us to work through all the issues and find ways to address those challenges. And if I could, you're likely to see more proposals like this, and you may want to consider an ordinance tailored to these adoptive reuse situations that build in the flexibility needed to redevelop the older properties that you might see coming through. Allison showed you the layout of the properties, so I won't belabor that. Again, this is a multimillion-dollar investment in the redevelopment of an aging and underutilized property. The proposal's consistent with the mixed use designation in the comprehensive plan and the relevant goals, strategies, and actions of the plan. Forty percent of the residential units are proffered as workforce and affordable housing in accordance with the old HOP policy. There's a phasing proffer to ensure the commercial space is provided. The proposal has a positive fiscal impact on the county. It passes the adequate public schools facilities test, the adequate transportation facilities test. There is a proffer of an updated traffic study if it's triggered, and it does provide suitable recreational amenities. As Allison pointed out, where we would normally have a playground, there is the parkland with the Civil War redoubt, and David Walken has engaged in talks, I think, with the battlefield folks, and he's committed to preserving that, exactly what form that'll take. I don't know if it's been finalized. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have of us, but would respectfully ask to approve this exciting project. Thank you.
Any, any questions for Mr. Getty?
No questions, I just think it's great. I'm happy, I think it's going to be great.
Thank you.
And we need that kind of thing. We need to be able to use these buildings instead of tearing them down. So I'm, I'm really happy about that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Allison Woodard, Woodard?
Good evening, Allison Woodard, 11 Heath Place, Newport News. I represent the Williamsburg Battlefield Association. We're a small nonprofit in Williamsburg. Our mission is to tell the forgotten stories of Civil War Williamsburg and to advocate for the preservation of the Williamsburg Battlefield. I spoke at the April Planning Commission. I also sent a letter via email to this body last week, just reiterating the WBA takes no position for or against the adaptive reuse. Our desire is to encourage the placement of a protective easement over the surviving Civil War redoubt on the hotel property. As I mentioned in my letter, this redoubt is one of 14 that was originally built early in the Civil War to defend the peninsula against a Union Army ascending to capture Richmond, which was the capital of the Confederacy at the time. And such an advance did occur in the spring of 1862, and a battle was fought here at Williamsburg on May 5. This particular redoubt, known as redoubt number three, was heavily engaged in the battle on May 5. And there was actually an artillery battery in that redoubt that was manned by local James City County and Williamsburg soldiers. Their captain was William Garrett, and he was born and raised and educated in Williamsburg. And his home is what we call today the Coke Garrett House. It's on East Nicholson Street, and it's the current home of the CEO and president of Colonial Williamsburg. Today, only half of those original redoubts survive in whole or in part. And other than the actual, the portion of the actual historical Fort McGruder on Penniman Road, this redoubt represents the only remaining redoubt from the center of the battlefield where the heaviest fighting took place. The WBA was actually working with hotel management to put some new interpretive signs at the redoubt when we learned of the pending sale. One of the signs was to tell the story of the local men who were in the redoubt. We've put that project on hold for now. We do recognize and appreciate very much that Conserve Holdings' master plan indicates no disturbance to the redoubt. However, there is no legal instrument in place to protect that redoubt in perpetuity from future destruction or inappropriate use. The Virginia Department of Historic Resources does recognize the redoubt as having significant archaeological, archaeological, as a significant archaeological site, but the best that can do is discourage destruction or misuse. The best protection for the redoubt in perpetuity is the placement of a historic preservation or open space easement over it. As I did mention in my letter last week, I have spoken with Conserve Holdings Vice President David Walken, and he is willing to consider an easement and wants to learn more about the easement process, which I told him I would find out about and give him some information on. Since then, I have contacted the Department of Historic Resources and spoken with their easement program specialist. She has confirmed that the redoubt is eligible for an easement because it's in the core boundaries of a known battlefield, and she has sent me a packet of information on their easement process. I have communicated to Mr. Walken that I have that information, and I'll review it and summarize it for him. There are other agencies that could be considered for their easement programs as well, such as the Virginia Land Conservancy or Archaeological Conservancy. So I can look into those as well and report to him on that. But my, my purpose here again tonight, as expressed in my letter, is to ask this body to support the placement of an easement over this redoubt and to encourage Conserve Holdings to pursue a protective easement over this redoubt so that it will be guaranteed for the Williamsburg community to have this part of their Civil War history in perpetuity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ohio's speaker is Chris Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I had the privilege of representing Riverside Health System in the acquisition and development of Quarter Path at Williamsburg, and a portion of that property contained redoubts and a portion of the Bloody Ravine, which was a central site of heavy fighting in the Battle of Williamsburg. And when Riverside initially acquired the property from Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I impressed upon them the importance of preserving the historical significance of the redoubt site itself. And Riverside was able to work with John Corstein in establishing Redoubt Park. And Riverside was able to work with John Corstein in establishing Redoubt Park, and this redoubt is part of the overall network, as the previous speaker described, of Confederate fortifications in that area. So, it is critically important to our Civil War history that that site be preserved. It concerns me that residents of the area and kids will be playing in the area and that its character will be diminished as a result of its occupancy and utilization. So, if there were a way to preserve it in a more meaningful way, I think that would be important and beneficial to the community at large. I would also note, and I was not aware, that the property owner owns the adjoining apartments, which I think is fantastic, and it also provides for opportunities for cross-access, where there would be easements shared between the properties and possibly entrances could be consolidated and reduced as we're constantly looking to improve traffic flow on our major corridors. There was a description of the commercial component of the project as being vibrant and vital. Having done a lot of work in that area, I would say that that commercial component is going to struggle. I can't point to except for Mr. Getty's son's barbecue place, a thriving business in that corridor. So, I fear that a few years down the road, you're going to be confronted with a situation where you've got underutilized space that's been reserved for commercial uses that simply aren't in existence. Now, the developer has not come forward to say they have a use in mind for it, but I suspect it's going to be a heavy lift to find something to fill second-generation or third-generation space in that configuration. It lacks the loading access and parking and visibility that would be necessary to support an intensive commercial enterprise. So, I would suggest to you that, thinking ahead, that you might want to provide the applicants some flexibility to convert that space to residential and that perhaps just to satisfy the requirements of mixed use, it's included a component of commercial that may or may not be feasible. So, that's really kind of what I see in looking ahead at that corridor, that its highest and best use is actually for workforce housing, and we should maximize the opportunity and allow the developer to add more units rather than to try to force them into a commercial scenario that, in my professional opinion, is not viable. Thank you.
Mr. Last speaker, cards. We'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
If I could, just a couple of comments. I think I was the first member of the board to talk with the developers because this is located in my district, and I really do appreciate the work that staff did in terms of trying to work with the developer and making sure that there was a way to allow this to occur. As others have suggested, this is really an ideal kind of opportunity for us to address a serious concern, that is, the need for more workforce housing in the community, and to do it in a way that takes advantage of an existing facility, an existing building that doesn't require new greenfield development and is located strategically in terms of transportation and maybe a way of seeing some additional commercial activity strengthened along the Route 60 East corridor, you know, which will now be sort of situated between this new sports facility and Busch Gardens, for instance. And so, there may be some great opportunities from that perspective. I would wonder if there's a way for us to include in the adoption of the resolution, or we would have to do it as a separate motion, an encouragement to the developer to seek, to put an easement on the redoubt property in order to ensure its continued viability. But having said that, I would certainly like to move the resolution and ask the board if they consider adding that, not condition, but recommendation.
Would the, is the applicant present that we could ask them that now, if they would be willing to?
The representative is here, but I don't know. Well, I don't think we're...
You're just putting a recommendation.
I'm not looking to change the resolution.
Right.
It's really just to express our encouragement to pursue that opportunity.
I think we've heard it loud and clear.
Mm-hmm. With that, I would move the resolution.
I do have a comment.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, it's an ordinance.
I'm sorry, ordinance.
So, the only thing that's wrong with city barbecue is it's in the city of Williamsburg, because it's an excellent place to eat, and I'm, but I'll go there because I think we're a region. So, but I have, I don't want to say I have mixed feelings because that's not fair. I'm like, I'm thrilled to see the use of this building in this way. And affordable housing, I think, is something that we hear about, and this is a great opportunity. I'm disappointed to see a hotel go off and to see that, those rooms be lost because we know already, I believe we have booked forty weekends in the first year of the Sports Center, and I hope I'm not letting something out of the bag, but I'm sure we'll get a more precise number soon. And some of these tournaments are quite large and taking every piece of rooms that we have. And so, I hate to see those rooms leave our inventory. So, I am hopeful that there will be an opportunity for another hotel, perhaps Mount Bay, you know, the, near the Busch Gardens area, because Jame City, it's been, I believe, over twenty-plus years that a new hotel has come to Jame City County. And so, I don't want this to discourage someone from coming here because there are so many opportunities moving ahead. So, this is a real balance, I believe. But I do commend the developers. I think you could just look at the flats and see. I mean, I think they're full all the time, so we know that there's a need for this type of development in our area. And so, but I did want to share my concern over using, losing that, the hotel inventory. So, thank you.
So, I'm sorry.
Okay, anybody else for, all right, okay.
I just wanted to say, so we're moving the ordinance. It would be simpler to separate the two and just have a resolution encouraging the developer to seek out opportunities for historic easement on that redoubt.
Okay, so we will take the vote on the ordinance and then come back to whatever else you want. Mr. Stevens, call the roll. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Arson?
Aye.
Who cares?
And now the resolution to encourage the developer to seek out an opportunity for placing a historic easement on that property at the redoubt.
Do you have that, the motion from the board? Call the roll. Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Arson?
Aye.
Who cares?
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, I would encourage us to think about perhaps revisiting our home housing opportunity policy. As you noted in the packet that we have here, among the things that count against that affordable housing policy are homes that come in at 120% of the average median income for the area. It's hard to think of that as workforce housing or not being market rate. And, you know, I think we know that our needs are really at a lower income level than that.
Even if we can basically have staff take that and maybe make a proposal back to us on how we might amend that policy, I would appreciate it. We are now down to number four. Z-240012 and SUP-24-0023, Chickahominy Haven Marina Rezoning and Special Use Permit, R2 to A1. Roberta Sula?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Mr. Jason Grimes of AES Consulting Engineers has applied on behalf of Sincere Estates LLC to rezone the site of the Chickahominy Haven Marina from R2 to A1 with proffers. Along with the rezoning, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow for the legal operation of the existing marina and existing proposed accessory uses, existing and proposed accessory uses, including a restaurant, boat storage, boat trailer parking, a general store, wet slips, docks, and piers. The subject property is located outside the primary service area. It's owned R2, general residential, and is designated rural lands on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. This lot is shown on the 1965 Master Plan for the Chickahominy Haven subdivision, formerly known as the Haven. It's shown as a commercial lot. However, that plate, that plat predates our zoning ordinance. Thus, when the site did receive a zoning designation of R2 along with the rest of the Haven, it had been operating as a commercial marina for several years. Boating facilities associated with HOAs are permitted uses in the R2 district. However, as this marina is owned and operated privately, it does not fit under that permission and has operated as a legal nonconformity for much of its existence. Many uses on the site, including the general store, restaurant, wet, and wet slip rentals, have lost their legally nonconforming status as they've ceased operation for a period of over two years. The new owners of the marina wish to reestablish those uses. However, as they have lost that status, reestablishing the uses is not permitted in the current zoning district. Additionally, renovations to structures related to uses that have maintained their legally nonconforming status are limited by provisions of the zoning ordinance so as to avoid the expansion of nonconforming uses. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to the A1 district, which permits marinas and their accessory uses by SUP. The zoning aligns with some adjacent and nearby properties. The applicant has proffered to exclude in perpetuity all other uses permitted in the A1 district aside from the marina and its associated uses. And staff has also proposed SUP conditions which would mitigate impacts of the use and which would also provide an opportunity to address existing issues on the site, such as parking nonconformities and unaddressed stormwater runoff, which would otherwise persist. At their April 2 meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of these applications, subject to the proffers and conditions. With the attached conditions and proffers, staff finds that the proposal is compatible with surrounding zoning, development, and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the proposed rezoning and SUP applications subject to those conditions and proffers. The applicant is with us tonight, and I'm also available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff right now? Okay, thank you. Mr. Everson?
Mr. Chairman, basically, the commission was very pleased to see this project go forward to revitalize this marina. Unfortunately, it's been closed for over two years, so here we are. There was one concern, the only concern that came up is regarding noise from events, because there apparently is going to be some events out there. And staff indicated that a permit would be needed for special events and the compliance with the noise ordinance would be required. Now, and believe it or not, we actually had a couple of comments. Two people showed up at the public hearing in support. So, as was mentioned, we went 6-0 because it'd be very nice to have that up and running and looking a lot better than it is right now.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Everson?
I had a question. So, was, the two people that spoke were, they, I mean, I hear a lot of things about the Haven. I just can't imagine that the noise would really be that big of an issue. I think it's a pretty fun place to live.
Yeah.
Noise.
They were not?
No.
Okay.
It was one of the people to my left.
Okay.
Who lives in a, you know, a quiet, reasonable, staid community and was afraid of, you know, wild, crazy drunken parties, I suppose.
That's not going to happen out there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Open the public hearing, and we have speakers starting with Stephen Barone.
Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Stephen Barone, and I'm the owner of Sincere Estates and managing member of Midway Marina. I'd like to begin expressing how excited we are to be a part of this property. When we purchased this property a year ago, I had no idea how much history it held. Since then, we have had the pleasure of meeting many members of the community and the marina, and they shared countless stories about the memories they've made over the years. People have told me about coming here for prom dates, working as a dockhand, spending summers at the restaurant, joining the ski club, and so much more. It's clear this property means a lot to many people. Since we've been here, we've already begun creating our own memories. And one thing is clear: we all share the same desire to bring this place back to life so future generations can create memories of their own. This rezoning will give us the opportunity to roll up our sleeves and get to work. It will allow us to restore this property to its former glory, and we are truly excited to be a part of this journey. Any questions?
Questions for you? Thank you. All right, thank you. And our next speaker is James Cummings, also one of the applicants.
I reside at 100 Lakeview in Twin Fork, Virginia. And I'm going to just second really what Barone, Mr. Barone just said. I've been excited to be part of this project. I really, really enjoyed hearing all the memories, really enjoyed being down there. I know my kids have spread a lot of gravel and done a lot of different things to try to fix what we could fix, and teaching them hard work and getting memories with them. But I can't work down there for more than ten minutes without someone riding up on their golf cart telling me about, "This kid did this," or "They did this when they were this" or "that." I mean, it's pretty incredible. It really is. And I'm more than excited to be able to bring it back. You know, the shorelines and a lot of these things need a lot of work, and we're just asking to be able to get rezoned and fix it. And so, any questions for me?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. And our last speaker, I believe, is just one, two, three, did I get them all? Jim, our next speaker, Jim Hernandez.
My name's Jim Hernandez. I reside at 114 Discovery Lane in Williamsburg. Sorry, I've got a sore throat. Ms. Larson, thank you for clearing up the noise issue. Well, I'm here because of these guys, to be honest with you. I know Jay, he's worked for me for 20 years, and I worked with him for 20 years. He's a very smart young man, great father, and I'm very proud of what these guys, and Steve, same thing. I've known Steve for three years. I'm very proud of what these guys have done with their project. I've gone out there many times by boat, and it's amazing what it looks like today as opposed to even six months ago. So, and I too have memories. There used to be a ski jump out there. My kids and I would, my girls, now they're not, they're women, but they would, we'd get on the boat, and we'd go out there, and we'd hang out on that ski, and then we'd go across, it used to be called Woody's, right? It used to be called Woody's. So, we'd go to Woody's and get a hamburger and hot dog, and we were loving life. I tell you, I live in Powten Shores, and in Powten Shores, we have about 70 houses on the water. I was the vice president of the HOA, and I discussed with most everybody in there that this was going to happen, and it was nothing but positive, you know, because a lot of the people in our neighborhood, you know, we go up to Chip, to James, and we went to the chick. It would be great to have that open again and to restore some of those memories, okay? So, I really appreciate you listening to us tonight. I appreciate, and I really hope that you support these guys, and hope to see you out there. Thank you.
And our last speaker on this one is Chris Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I am in total support of this project, and I'm particularly appreciative of the fact that it involves no public investment in a marina. We got a $10 million white elephant, and we're going to get about $3 million for it. But this project is great because it's the private sector doing what the private sector does best, which is identify opportunities to make money, create value, and create memories for people. So, I applaud these guys, and in looking at the conditions that you've imposed... So, I applaud these guys, and in looking at the conditions that you've imposed, on the southern end of the property, you're not going to allow them to redevelop the pier that's there. And I would suggest to you that when it comes to boat mooring capacity, more is better, okay? And restricting their development of the waterfront and limiting the number of boats that can be stored there, I think is wrong-headed, and we should be doing what we can to make the project successful in leveraging their private investment to make a real destination and neighborhood asset for this project. So, I enthusiastically support it and ask you to do likewise.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and look to the board for a discussion and our motion.
Yeah, I've got a few that, since it's in my district and have known it for quite some time. I'm glad to see that they're reusing this property as a marina and having a little general store, storage area. They talked about a living shoreline out there. They talked about the floating docks and the pier that they're going to, a couple of piers that they're going to put out there and that sort of thing. And, you know, I met with them and went over the property and all that, and they've got a good plan for this piece of property, what they've already been able to do, just clean it up over years of, you know, the owners getting older and not being able to take care of it and that sort of thing. And now we've got some young, energetic men that want to come in there with their families and make this a family-run marina. And, you know, when you're on the water, there's not very many places to stop and grab something to eat. And so, this is going to be one more added thing. It's going to be great for the community, but it's also going to be great for the boats coming up and down the Chickahominy to go in there, and especially now after finding out from Chris, we can't eat the fish in there. Maybe we can eat the fish at the restaurant. So, at least we'll have good fish at the restaurant, maybe we can eat, and we won't be able to eat the fish out of the river. But once we get to the point where you look for a decision on this or a motion, I'd like to bring the motion forward. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments or questions? So, we have a motion? Motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, it's a motion for approval of the resolution and the ordinance.
Any orders? Yes. Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Our last public hearing is disposal of county property located at 4601 Ironbound Road. Mr. Paul Holt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Eastern State Hospital is located at 4601 Ironbound Road, and as you may know, a large part of this property has been declared a surplus by the Commonwealth of Virginia. Within the surplus property, an approximately 14-acre portion, as shown on the map on your screens, will be transferred to Colonial Behavioral Health for the construction of a new crisis services center. Procedurally, though, the property must first be transferred from the state to the county. Staff recommends the Board of Supervisors open and conduct the public hearing tonight and then close that item. Staff then recommends the Board defer consideration of this item until your May 27 business meeting. The additional time will then allow the Commonwealth to secure the necessary signatures on all of the final documents. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Holt? Hey, we have no Planning Commission report on this one, so I will open the public hearing, and first speaker is Chris Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. As I looked at the property, this is actually a viable commercial corridor as opposed to the Route 60 site that was previously approved. And I would advise that the retention of at least an acre or two that actually fronts along Ironbound at a signalized intersection near the new municipal complex, should you decide to proceed forward, might be in the county's best interest, and that you could then transfer the property removed from Ironbound Road to Colonial Behavioral Health, which is a worthy organization. They do great work. But retaining the flexibility that this board said that it wanted with regard to future public facilities, it might be worthwhile having a nice two-acre parcel that could accommodate a future public facility rather than giving the property in its entirety to a non-governmental agency. Thank you.
And our second speaker is David Coe.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We want to take our time first and thank Mr. Stevens, each member of the board, Mr. Eisenhour, Mr. McGlinnan, Ms. Larson, Ms. Knoll, Mr. Hippel, sorry, for meeting with us over the last year or so as this process has unfolded. What is important, one of the things that's important for us to note, is that this land was granted to Colonial. We found out by a public notice, a press release from Governor Youngkin announcing some of the awards under his right help right now, Mental Health Initiative. So, it's something we had been seeking for a while. We did not know where the property would end up. We were interested in Eastern State and have been for a long time. But when that came through, we've been working on this model, and the state identified the parcel, has been working with developers and with us for 17 months now to get to the point where we are today. We are looking to build what we're calling, we officially named last week, our Center for Support and Wellness, to provide a different level of crisis services for our entire service area, which includes James City, York County, Pecoson, and Williamsburg. It is part of an effort on our part to modernize our buildings, modernize our services, expand access to a greater variety of services in our community, and to do so in a way that does not take us too far up one side of our catchment area, to take us too far from other parts of it, to keep it as central as possible. We could not do this at all and could not have been even where we are today in process had it not been for Mr. Stevens, Mr. Reinheimer, listening to us, for you as board members listening to us. But there are others in the room that we absolutely have to thank. Adam Kinsman has helped this transfer process immensely and has helped shepherd this whole conveyance process with timelines and so on. Paul Holt, helping us to understand zoning, and a word that I understood, I thought I understood before we got here, but easements. I understand easements in a much different way, and I didn't know there were that many allowed on a single property, many of which that were not even recorded. In conducting a space needs analysis that we did about a little over a year ago, we could not have done that without the help from Grace Boone and Sean Gordon with procurement and the space planning needs. There's an expertise that they have that helped us with that we did not have. So, we thank you for that. And in, you know, we are planning a groundbreaking on that property later, in the late summer, and we are, we're excited, well, we're talking with the Parks and Rec Department about some support around some logistics with that, and we're very thankful for that, very grateful for that. We also have had a number of local civil engineers, land use attorneys, architects, builders, many of which that are not connected to this process at all, but are simply interested in supporting services and the needs in the community, who have advised us at many points along the way and are continuing to do so. The developers there, D.R. Horton with the Timmins Group as part of them, they have helped a great deal with surveys, plaits, some studies that were done, been able to share with us. And here tonight, at a late hour with absolutely no other reason than to be supportive, here tonight is Bob Williams, who's our new director at Eastern State Hospital, our partner from the state. He's been here the whole time, and they're fantastic partners and are going to become even better partners as we go. So, we are grateful for the opportunity to do this, and we're a couple of signatures away. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions for? Thank you, sir. Close the public hearing, and per our instructions, we will leave the resolution to be considered at a later meeting, once the deed paperwork is all finalized. Okay. That concludes our public hearings, and with the board's permission and concurrence, I would like to take about a five-minute break to work off my cramp before we can continue with the rest of the meeting. Order? Back from recess. See when the, okay, there we are. Okay, we will continue with board considerations, and our board consideration this evening is the FY 2026 budget adoption and resolution of appropriations. Mr. Stevens will start the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I will ask Sharon McCarthy to come to the podium. She's going to lead the first couple of slides, but as she's doing that, I do want to just share, we have given you a presentation at your seat. This will be available within the board agenda documents as well. And I know we heard from a number of speakers, and I've talked to residents or heard from residents over the last several weeks, where it appeared that residents felt they were having a 21% tax increase and possibly a property tax rate increase this year, and those things just aren't correct. And at least for some of them, when I explained that we had a 15% average increase last year and it was going to be 6% this year, for many of them, that was better. It's still an increase. I don't want to say it's insignificant. It is 21% over two years, but I think there are a number of residents who felt it was a significant increase last year, and it was going to be another 21% this year. And I just want to clarify, that is not the case in the proposed budget. So, I'll address that a little more later, but I didn't want to skip that in the beginning because that seemed to be significant for many in our community.
Well, while you're addressing that, perhaps you could take a moment and address the assessments and just talk about why they are, what they are, when they're done, you know, this is code of Virginia.
Ms. McCarthy can correct me as we move along. Ms. McCarthy can correct me as we move along or add to, but it is a code requirement that we reassess properties. In James City County, we do it every two years. Some years ago, we did it every year, and a decision, I believe, was made that doing it every two years would provide some certainty, so it didn't go up every year. And that was at least how I thought we moved to the two-year assessment cycle. It is a code requirement from the state. We are to have the properties assessed at market value. It's not an appraisal. It's mass assessment. So we're doing lots of properties in a short period of time, meaning this two-year timeframe. It is based on sales that occur in or near the property of similar properties. And when they're in the neighborhood, it is much better. And our property values, we have pushed our assessors to get the properties up to market value, because if they're not, then somebody in another home is maybe paying not their share of the property tax, where somebody's paying more. If the homes should be equal value or more, this one would be paying more property taxes, this one would be paying less if we haven't assessed them correctly. So we do try to get them close to market value. I would tell you that when I talk to the assessors, and I've talked to them recently, while sales have slowed down, prices have not. Prices are still continuing to increase. And when we look at assessments, homes are still selling above what we have them assessed at in '24. And I think that will be a continuing issue. And as we go forward in time, and I haven't addressed it specific in my comments, I do think as you go forward, we would do some, or at least I would recommend, as you have an increase in assessments that's significant, some change in the tax rate. Last year, I did not recommend that, and I will discuss that some more, but it really was staffing and compensation and being competitive for us and school division, and that is making a difference. It was really needed last year to improve our workforce because we were struggling. And I will tell you, six months later, we are better. And we'll talk more about that at your business meeting. I'll reference a little bit of that tonight. But that increase has made a difference in terms of our staffing, attraction, retention in almost every department. It has solved some issues that were really critical this time last year, so.
And then I would just ask one follow-up. If someone next year gets an assessment that they do not agree with, there is an appeal process, correct?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. There is an appeal process, and ahead of that, there's a conversation with our assessor to make sure we didn't see something incorrectly. Maybe we said they had four bedrooms and they have three. Maybe we had a condition of a home at a higher value. If they'll let us in it, we can change the value of a home because it's older and hasn't been renovated. We have to make some assumptions from the outside, whether it's a low-end kind of interior or a high end. And so our assessors are always working through that. But we definitely would talk with those who receive an assessment they think is unfair before they have to file on a formal appeal. And then they can file a formal appeal to sort of take that through. And it's not just saying they don't agree. There has to be some basis for that, meaning properties similar to theirs are not selling for what we've got it assessed near. But there is a process to appeal the assessment as we go through that in '26. So we have about a year from now that we would be talking through the assessments for the '26 timeframe.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. McCarthy was going to give a short overview, talk about some differences from what you saw in the proposed budget, and see if you have questions there. And then I've got a few follow-up comments from that.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. The fiscal year '26 budget is scheduled for adoption this evening, but before taking any action, as Mr. Stevens had mentioned, we do have some high-level information that we would like to provide. To start us off, the total budget for fiscal year '26 for all of our funds is about $390 million. Of that amount, the general fund, which is the main operating fund, comprises about $264 million of that total. The increase in the general fund over this year's budget is about $8.3 million, or about 3.2%. It maintains the real estate tax rate at $0.83 per $100 of assessed value, and FY '26 is a non-reassessment year. The only proposed fee increases are for some parks and rec, fine art classes, and a realignment of our ambulance transport fees so that they agree with the Medicare reimbursement rates. This budget also includes $3.9 million, or about 3.9% of additional funding to the WJCC School Division. It does not include over $10 million in additional requests that were not funded. The increases in the capital projects and the debt service funds are due to a few significant projects. If you recall, during the COVID years, funding for capital projects was put on hold for a number of years, but the need for those projects remained, and we are catching up on some of our projects. This project provides, excuse me, this budget provides for a 3% raise for employees effective July 1, 2025, a potential 1% raise January 1, 2026, and it adds a total of five FTEs to the budget. In terms of changes to the proposed budget, there was only one change made to the general fund, or only one change, and it was to the general fund. The significant change was adding $1 million to our county contribution for operations for the school division. And we did remove a $400,000 transfer to our health and dental fund for the county's retiree healthcare initiative. In '26, this will actually be funded from our health and dental reserves, which is an accumulation of savings in our claims over the last few years, and the employees did share in that. Instead, that $400,000 was reallocated to increase our funding to WADA and for some other changes in the other departments based on activity between the proposed budget and tonight. And with that, I believe Mr. Stevens has some additional information that he will share.
I do. Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. As I said earlier, over the last several weeks, I have responded to a number of questions related to, I guess, our historical budget increases, historical real tax, real estate tax increases, and what we might look like going forward. And so I wanted to take a minute and just provide some information to help our residents understand our actual historical increases. At first, I would tell you, it is difficult to compare. Ms. McCarthy had a different statement, but it's really hard to compare our budget year to year, as there are many nuances that may not be apparent without some explanation or a deeper dive into any one particular year. For instance, in our total budget, it includes all revenue for a particular year. In some years, this would include borrowed funds or debt-related, that are debt-related for a specific project. So it's a one-time, potentially large expense. These borrowed funds make it appear like our budget has grown significantly, and however, the impact on the budget really isn't realized to later years as we repay that debt service. So while you may see a $70 million expenditure in this year's budget, this year's not really paying for it. We're paying for it with borrowed money and then paying it back over time, typically a 20-year timeframe on money that we borrowed. So this would apply to projects such as our government center that is in our proposed CIP for FY '26. Our general fund provides a better, but not perfect, year-over-year comparison. This is where the majority of our operating expenses reside. There are many revenue sources for the general fund, but property and sales tax revenues make up a significant portion of the revenues for this fund. If we look back 10 years and compare our FY 2017 adopted general fund budget of $193.5 million to our proposed FY '26 general fund budget of $263.7 million, you can see that our budget has increased 36% over this 10-year period, or an average of 3.6% per year. For me, that is not an unreasonable kind of request. A lot of that did occur in the last two years, but over the 10-year period, it is not a significant increase in our annual budget. If you look at our real estate tax growth during the same timeframe, you see a 42% increase over that same 10-year timeframe from 2017 until our proposed FY 2026. Some of this increase is due to new development that's occurred over the past 10 years, and we've had a lot of new development. But a significant part of this increase is in what our residents have had to pay in additional real estate taxes. But again, 3.6% for our general fund budget is compared to 4.2% for the last 10 years for what residents or our real estate tax revenue growth. A large part of this increase occurred last year when our real estate assessments increased 21%. The Board of Supervisors provided a five-cent tax credit for the current year to spread this increase over two years. Most of the additional revenue went to ensure that our salaries were competitive within the region. The county had struggled with staffing for a number of years. Four years ago, we began increasing the hourly rate for the bottom third of our pay ranges and our entry level, when our entry level hourly rate was $9.64 per hour. We just couldn't attract people to be janitorial staff, grounds maintenance staff, all of those entry-level, non-skilled positions, we couldn't fill them. And so cleaning our facilities and maintaining the sides of our roads and the grounds became harder and harder. Today, we've moved that $9.64 to $16.40. So in a four-year timeframe, we have increased our entry level salary significantly. That has taken money to get there. Last fall, we implemented a compensation study and moved all of our pay ranges to the 65th percentile. As a result, we are seeing improvements in staffing in all departments. I expect to bring more details to you. We talked about it some at your retreat earlier this year. I want to bring more back to you. Our chairman asked at your business meeting in two weeks. But one example where we have had real success is within our grounds maintenance division. We have 31 positions, and historically, we struggled to attack, attract, and retain qualified applicants. We were constantly training, outfitting, new hires who lacked the experience and institutional knowledge that resulted in more turnover. Our ability to provide core services was declining and causing additional stress on those who had been dedicated to the county and serving this community for many years. A few years back, this division had a turnover rate of over 94%. In FY '24, that turnover rate was down to 26%. And remember, we had started, starting at the bottom of our staff, increasing the pay scales four years ago, and for '25, it is now 3%. Last year, eight of the 31 positions were vacant, almost 24% of the department or that division. Today, there is one vacancy, and they're much more stable and not as much turnover. And quite frankly, we're getting better applicants that can do the work. So I think from that perspective, the increase in what we have done for pay and compensation has made significant improvements in this department as well as many other departments. And again, we will share more with that with you in the coming weeks. I wonder who's doing my slides, but next slide, please. We've also heard a lot of, and I don't know what happened on my formatting back and forth. It wasn't like this when I started, but it ended up a little different. So I'll read through the slide to at least say what's there on our timeline. I'll come back to that. We've also heard comments that we should not build a new government center. And I will tell you, we don't have to build a center, but we've got to do something. We are out of space for county staff, and we've not run our staff in an excessive manner. But outside of the office that I'm in and our law enforcement center, when you go back behind the doors, we have put people in offices that was designed for one. Now, there's two, three, or four. We simply don't have room for more space for people to work, to serve this community. And as our population grows, that will continue to be a challenge for us. We must do something as we're out of space, and our facilities either need significant renovations or we need to build new. In my opinion, building will not get less expensive, and waiting will ultimately cost the county more. Since 2020, the county has commissioned several studies to analyze potential solutions for its current and future space needs. We did the space needs assessment in 2020. In 2022, we did the facilities master plan, looked at all county facilities. And our space needs assessment took into account all of our county facilities as well, from law enforcement to our school division, to social services, to parks and rec, to all of those, all of our facilities. In 2022, there was a building consolidation study where we looked at bringing a majority of these departments and older buildings that need renovation into one consolidated facility. And that consolidated study in 2022 showed that the costs were very similar. A little more to build a new complex, but very similar in terms of the cost to just add as we go on the next 30 years, or to build a new building today. We had an interim agreement for the design of the consolidated government center that was a 30% design. We've talked about that an awful lot last year. That's what's led to this rendering. We've had a number of public meetings trying to solicit input and involve our community. In 2024, we asked for an update to the building consolidation study. We were two years later. Our costs had grown substantially. Some of that through things such as the podium parking that you see here, which is some parking under the building. This building will be extremely visible. We wanted it not to be a gold-plated structure, but something the community could be proud of, and the underground parking helped with some of the parking on the current site. So we've made some things that cost more, but we wanted to make sure that consolidation study of just expanding what we have compared to building new was not way out of balance. And it's not. We went back to the same firm, and they reaffirmed that your cost to expand this campus and other buildings, social services, for instance, and renovate were similar cost to building a new building today, even at our $180 million projected cost. So again, I do think we're still wisely spending the community's money. We then, or you then approved a second interim agreement, and that's the last bullet that you can't really see here, or our interim agreement for the consolidated government center to take us to 100% design. And that work is ongoing now, and we have added the addition of adding the library to a design. So that is something that is separate from the government center but attached to the lobby and part of what we're designing as we go forward. The location near the James City County Recreation Center on Long Hill Road is near the county's population and geographic center. It's also an existing WADA bus route and close to Route 199. We believe it would serve as a one-stop shop for most citizen services, reducing confusion and improving accessibility. This campus is hard for residents who don't regularly come here to know where they're supposed to go. It's not ADA compliant or as compliant as it should be, and having a one building with all of us there will make that much more accessible to our residents and easier to know where they need to be. In addition, consolidation would increase worker efficiency, streamline communication and collaboration among departments, and would greatly reduce the need for our inter-office travel. We see a lot of benefits to the project, and I still believe this project makes good sense. Next slide, please. I was asked to bring back information we presented a few weeks ago related to providing a two-cent tax credit for FY '26. So you've seen this slide before. We did talk about it. The chart shows the impact on homes at various values, with our median home value being approximately $400,000. So the home in the middle is very close to our median home value. A two-cent tax credit would provide an $80 credit annually. So next year, if you provided that two-cent credit, it would save our median value of home $80 or just under $7 a month. A two-cent credit would cost us about 2 point, or excuse me, $3.2 million. And if the board was interested in providing the credit, we would recommend using a portion of our FY '24 year-end surplus. While we have built most of the need of that surplus into our five-year CIP, so I'm not telling you we really have a lot of extra that we don't know what to do with, we do have a plan over the next five years with increasing construction costs and projects that are out there to have a need for it. But our estimates are conservative, and we will adjust as needed going forward if you choose to use that surplus for a credit in FY '26. Any questions or direction related to that that you'd want to provide?
I would, I would ask about the government center as we move, if we, if that is moved forward, and looking at expenses. You know, things are going up. We're unsure with tariffs, you know, what is going to be happening there? So how do we, I mean, at some point, do we say uncle? I mean, if we move ahead, and it just gets, just continues to grow out of, you know, not, it's things we don't have control over.
Ms. McCarthy, I think approval of the budget doesn't mean the project's approved, right? The government center's under design. When we get to the end of it, and the process we are through this PPEA process, we will get to October, November, when they have 100% design, and they will give us a price. And that will be the price. And under the design build, they're at risk as much as we are for what happens in the future, maybe more so. And so I do think you have an opportunity. If the budget approves in the next three months, things are way out of whack and it doesn't make sense, I think they and us would come to you and say, that doesn't make sense. I don't think construction prices will necessarily get cheaper, but we have seen where you had some spikes that were short-lived because of the unknown, and tariffs could have that impact. That seems to be relaxing a little bit today. But will, how it will impact our project, we will know in a few months as we get real pricing from our designer, developer, contractor. And so you'll have that opportunity then to say, we need to pause it, or we need to go forward. And pausing it might mean we wait six months. You might go a different direction, but it doesn't reduce the cost. We're still going to come back to you with, I need a place to put people. And whether we rent space or build space, there's going to be that need for the county going forward.
I had some follow-up, just some, some question. Is now a good time, or do you want to just keep it? Okay.
I'm happy either way. We'd happy to answer a question. I have one more slide. I was also asked, go to the next slide and we'll come back, maybe with questions and comments. I did have a quest, request for how would we provide, or could we provide a five or 10 cent permanent reduction to the tax rate? And the short answer is, we could do that, but it comes at a cost. The tax credit really is deferring some short-term things that you would see back in the budget next year if we took out projects or things from departments. Or if you use the fund balance, it is one of those things that we could do for a one-time expenditure. When you get into a permanent reduction or long-term reduction of five or 10 cents, we've got to primarily reduce staff. It is going to be people. That is the majority of where I have discretion in terms of what we can do. We cannot use our surplus for ongoing expenses, so a permanent reduction in the tax rate would require a replacement of the revenue source with some other form of revenue, or a reduction in the ongoing expenses. I will share, and I believe I shared with each of you, that our $263 million budget, approximately $190 million of it, are budgeted for mandated services. Now, that $190 million could be a little more or a little less. You can argue some of that. But those mandated services are things that were required by the state to provide to our community as a county. There are $74 million that are considered discretionary services, although most would say they're not. They're not required by code, but $46 million of that discretionary services is for our school division, where you're funding above the SOQ requirement for our school division. I would think the schools absolutely wouldn't be able to serve this community if you took away $46 million, as they're asking really for 10 more million from us. We provided 4 million more. You take away from that, it really does cramp what they are trying to do to serve these, our students. We have 10 million for parks. That is a discretion. It's not a state-required expense. I think this community really expects to have good parks, and we do, but it is, there is a cost with that. really expects to have good parks, and we do, but it is, there is a cost with that. We have six million in it for our library system. We have three million for grounds maintenance, cutting roads, picking up litter, those kinds of things, doing field work, things that our community sees, and that makes this an enjoyable community to live in, and one that when you visit, you're really impressed by how it looks. We don't have to do that. It's discretionary. But I think many would expect us to continue to do that. We give two million to agencies such as water that we don't have to provide a transit system. That's not a requirement. But if you're going to have water, you've got to have local funding to get the federal money to support it. So I think it's a service that's important in this community. And while there is not a state requirement, as I said, for many of these, I believe many of our residents appreciate and expect the county to support this service. So the five million, or five-cent reduction would represent eight million dollars, ten-cent represent sixteen million. I put together this chart, working with, with Sheriff McCarthy, trying to have an idea of how we might get there. If the board wanted to direct that, some of that is trying to reduce debt, meaning you wouldn't borrow debt necessarily this year. Not sure that's a very viable option long-term, but it's there. It's a, an impact on our budget the next two years, that if we didn't borrow those funds, we wouldn't have that impact. So that's an option. The bigger part of that, and really, when you get into the eight million, there's, in this first year, there's about three million in that borrowing piece that if we didn't do, you'd save. The rest of it really gets back into raises, positions, and taking some back from school operations, which again, for them is raises and people. And that really is the biggest part of our budget. If you get to ten cents, it's really just more people. And again, what I would suggest, if we wanted to go that route, we would build it in attrition. As much as we have vacancies, we wouldn't replace them outside of public safety. As we have a vacancy, we'll just have less. And instead of twelve planning positions, we might have four. Instead of thirty-one buildings and grounds people, we might have twenty. All those things are possible, but they come at a cost in terms of services. And any change you make today, in my opinion, you won't notice for three months or six months. But six months from now, nine months from now, I think you would get complaints from our residents about why aren't we doing this? Why aren't we picking up that mattress that blew out? Why aren't we responding to a building permit question? Why aren't we? And the question will be, we don't have as many people. We have the same amount of work or a growing workload, and we can recover from that. But what we'd lose in six or nine months takes a long time to recover. And so I just think, I wouldn't recommend we do it, but it is an option if you want to head that direction. Yes, we could reduce the tax rate, but it comes at a cost of services, from parks and rec, to planning, to finance, to those other areas that are not law enforcement or fire.
You know, it took us, while I've sat on the board, it took us a long, long time to get to this point, to where we are now. And, you know, we've got staff to a point where they're not rich, but they're being paid a good salary for the job they do. And, and we're able to get more people in. Well, you know, I'm, I'm just like anybody else. If I don't have to pay any taxes, I'd be happy as hell, or just happy. And, you know, so that's a little bleep. But, you know, we all have to pay on the things we want. I want fire and police. I want certain things, and I'm willing to pay for certain things. Do I like to pay a whole lot? No, of course not. No one else does. But, you know, out of eighty-plus-thousand people, we had twenty-one people here tonight. Twenty-one out of eighty-some-thousand people. I look at the odds on that and what they are. And most of the people, you know, we had everything from, are you listening? Of course we're listening. I wouldn't be doing this job if I wasn't listening. Do, do, have you ever run a business? Yes, I've run a business for thirty-seven years. Thank you very much. I know what the heck I'm doing. Twenty-one percent tax increase? No, it wasn't a twenty-one percent tax increase. You know, that, taught my schools, well, I shouldn't have to pay for schools. Well, what do you want, dumb kids? I mean, that's really stupid. And you're going to have the next generation coming up, that are going to take care of us, and we don't want to educate those children. Man, that, that's poor common sense there. Gold-plated, the building is not gold-plated. We're trying to keep it as tight, but we're trying to make it a fifty-year build. And we're going to spend just as much redoing these old buildings as we are building the new building. And we're going to save not only that, but some of the buildings that we own can be put back into private hands and used as a tax base and get more money. We'll have less vehicles because we're using the elevator to go up and down and not riding across town. When I'm a citizen and I come in here, I can shop in one place rather than riding all across town, spending gas, ruining the environment. You're worried about that? Well, you better get out of your daggone vehicle. The, you know, the budget and what we pay in that, and our wages and all for our employees, yeah, we, we can, we cannot have, you know, half the employees we have. We can cut the stuff down. We can cut raises and that sort of thing. And then the services are bad. Why don't y'all have better services? Why don't you do this? We heard tonight, why don't you cut the mediums? We're cutting the mediums. Mediums look better than they looked in five or six years. Why are we cutting the mediums? Well, if we cut the budget, we cut this out. We're not going to cut the mediums. They're going to grow up, they're going to be four-foot. They will. And they'll get cut once or twice by the state, and that's it. Our, you know, why do we need one big building? Why don't we have multiple buildings? That's what we've got now. Are you paying attention? Do you realize the community you live in? And I don't know where the comments have come from as far as people up north moving down. They're like, I, I don't, I don't care where you come from, as long as you're nice and all that. And if you like our community, stay. If you don't, the road that brought you here can take you right back out. And that's fine with me there. And so, you know, we have a great community. We all be very proud of our community. Yeah, it's, it's tough, but, you know, if you look at it and what we're doing, and what we're actually spending in our budget, we are very tight budget. We take things, and that's why I said, you know what we ought to do with everybody who, who wants to, and, and we could start with the twenty-one here tonight, and have a budget session next year, and say, you know what, let's have a class on budget. Where would you cut? And we'll put it all up on the wall. How would you cut? Okay, now how do you make this up? If you're sitting in this position, if you were up here, how would you do it? Maybe we can come out with an idea or two of that type of thing that, that are good. And, but as far as I, I talk to citizens constantly and ask them about the budget and the taxes and everything else. And of course, nobody's happy about ever paying. I, I'm right in line with them. I, I don't want to pay anymore. But I do like to know, when I leave out of my house, my wife and children have, if they need something, they can call the fire, the police, anybody, and get response to their house. And I don't want to cut back on that. I think we need more officers on the street than we have right now in order to keep crime, from crime from coming up from the other end of the community up this way. Not talking about our community, I'm talking about others. I won't name them because it'll sound bad about, you know, we're talking bad about another community. But, you know, and, and fire, we finally got our fire up to where they're not working double time and everything else. We finally got them up to the point where we got enough firefighters in there right now. We've got to add some more for retirement, that's right. But you've also got to remember what a lot of citizens don't know and don't understand is, if we hire this year, and we hired twenty people, there's a, comes a time when they retire and you lose fifteen or twenty people, or maybe more. And all of a sudden, services go down and everything else. So you've got a plan far enough in advance, and make sure you have things planned, and that's business thinking. And so, that's my two cents on that. And I appreciate all the citizens coming up. Always want to hear from citizens. I wish there was fifty thousand citizens out here complaining and, or praising or whatever they want to do, and, and giving us some guidance. We can always use guidance. And it's always important to hear from the citizens. And, and when they don't think that we're hearing from, and a lot of them that were here tonight, I, I went to the club and talked to them and told them, you know, what we're doing. So it's not that they haven't heard from us. It's, maybe they're not listening. And maybe a class would help them, you know, as far as how do you do a budget? What do you do with the budget? A lot of them are very smart individuals. They've done this before. They know it. But maybe they don't understand all the nuances of what goes in to the county facility here and how we go about things. So that's just a few items that I might have more later.
No, your time is.
I think we can count on that.
First, before I start asking my questions, I do want to take a brief moment and reflect back on a comment that I made during our last board meeting, because my, my colleagues are starting to get wrapped in. And I did something that I do not like to do, which is to watch a meeting back. It is very painful. I had a colleague on the school board, Mary Ann Mamonie, that watched every meeting back several times, and I don't know how she did it. But I said nothing of the kind. I, I did say that I understood that there was concern when you moved here and you had a home that was at a higher assessment. And, but if anyone took offense to that, I, I am very sorry, and I apologize for that. And I wasn't, I wasn't feeling my best that night. And I remember I looked over at John after I said it, and John kind of had this look on his face, and I thought, maybe I didn't say that right, you know. But, but I, I meant no disrespect. And so, but it, it got terribly mis, misreported on a social media site. And, and, and I can, I did something I shouldn't have done there too, and I went and said, I didn't say that. And, and then that was just more bruhaha. But I wish the person that had done that hadn't done that, because I'm always willing to have a conversation with anyone about anything that I say and take responsibility. When I took my oath of office, I solemnly swore to faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Board of Supervisors. And I remain committed to that oath and to the residents of James City County. My fellow board members and I take our task of being fiscally responsible with taxpayers' dollars very seriously. But I know that in challenging economic times, any increase in real estate assessments, taxes can be difficult for families who are already struggling. But at the same time, I know that we are tasked with providing excellent and extensive services to our community. And I remain committed to ensuring that every decision that we make takes the welfare of our residents into consideration. And so, thank you for letting me make that comment. And I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things, if I could, Mr. Stevens, because in looking through, you know, the, the budget summary, there are some items that there were, you know, more increased than others. But when I looked, there was, there was some comment made about that we didn't know how to budget. We weren't, we weren't putting the top things at the top. But when you look at our budget, you know, a great deal of our budget goes to police, fire, schools, the things that we are charged with providing. I do, I, I told Mr. Hippel, Mr. Hippel brought up this budget school to me a few months ago. And I told him, I thought that was an excellent idea, because when I've been involved in leadership classes, that is one of the exercises that we do that always turns out to be much harder than anyone thinks that it will be. And so I do think that is a, a good idea, because I do think that, you know, why did X department, you know, you've got another department that's five-point-eight percent increase, another that's thirteen-point-six. And so, talking about how that happens, why that happens. At one point in this budget conversation, someone brought up, well, we should cut the planners. Well, I sat through a planning class last week where they talked about how important the planning department is to the community. They are really the future. They are the visionary of this community. We need those planners. That is not what, you know, I want to ensure that the vision of our community, when we had people that came for our spring meeting a couple of weeks ago, they talked about the beauty of our community, and how you couldn't see certain things, and just could not get over the layout of our community, and how much time and effort had been put into that. And that's past board's vision, this board's vision, planning, administration. We, we've done good at that. And that's not something that we don't want to continue to do, I don't think. As far as when, you know, I no longer have kids in school, so I don't want to pay for schools. Well, when your kids were in school, somebody was paying that didn't have kids in school. They were supporting your public schools. And when you have a strong public schools, you have less crime, you have educated students, you have students that will come and stay in your community and help it thrive and take care of you, et cetera. So I, I hope we can all agree that it is very important to support our public education. And you are right about our SOQs. You know, we do do above, we do forty-six million. And by the way, no school system in Virginia operates on SOQs. So, and we've made, we've made headway with the General Assembly this year and the removal of the support cap, but there's always work to be done. But when I look through your mandatory list that you made, you know, I don't know that perhaps people are unaware that we have to give one-point-two million to the clerk of the circuit court. We have to give one-point-eight million to the Commonwealth's attorney. We give two-point-one million to the sheriff. We give another five-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand to the courts. So there are, there are things that we, that are put in place by others that we have to support with our taxpayer dollars. And, you know, I don't know that everyone is aware of that, but I think it's extremely important to point out that it's not just cut and dry. And, you know, as I said a few minutes ago, I do think we're going to have to continue to have a conversation about the government building. I am hoping that you are correct, and prices will, you know, stabilize. Or I did, when I was at the Henrico Sports and Events Center, they told me that they had bought their steel prior to COVID. And so, that's, they saved a lot of money that way, you know, but who knew? But, you know, it's an important, buildings don't last forever, you know. And as much as we might will them to do, they do not. And, you know, I think we know, moving forward in the future, we are going to need more land for, one, our schools, whether that's a school admin building, a middle school, an elementary. So, you know, there may be a possibility that this campus will then become, have a different, a public use, but a different use that will mean that we will not be spending the enormous amount of money that it costs to buy land these days. So I just, I, I thank you all for all the work that, that you have done on the budget. And I know that you had said that you were going to, I think, make a comment regarding next year when we see where assessments are. But I just urge a little bit of caution, because I know that the schools have come to us to say, I believe they're going, their ask this year, we were prepared to give two-point-nine. Their ask was eleven?
Thirteen initially.
Thirteen. So, and then they've told us, I think, moving forward, it'll be six to ten million, because their population is changing. It's not, you know, they, they had, their, their special ed, the, everything that's required there is changing. Students' second language is changing. So there's a lot that is changing for them that is causing their costs to go up as well. So I think we just, we just need to be prepared about that and, and talk about it, because as we move, as we move forward to next year. So
So I'll, I'll have, I have a few things I'd just like to, first, I want to thank the county administrator for bringing up the point about the fact that we are not experiencing a twenty-one percent tax increase this year, that that's misinformation that has been circulated through the community, and it does nobody any good to, to mislead the public in terms of what, what's happening. And sometimes it's not that misleading, misleading isn't out of any kind of sense of, of arrogance, meanness, or, or whatever. It is, it is really just a fact that perhaps not understanding the nuances of, of local government financing. And I would say that again in terms of the chart that was produced that suggested that we had essentially doubled in terms of rate of spending compared to the, the rate of inflation over the last several years and the rate of population growth, that that was really not an accurate comparison, as you point out in the information that you provided us with here. So, you know, I think it, it's incumbent upon us to try to make sure that people do understand some of these things, we, in, in a way that is understandable, clear, and accurate. And I appreciate your, your efforts at that, at that today. I, I do want to say Um, I, I do want to say, in terms of, uh, the, the, uh, the building, uh, that is being proposed, um, you know, I wasn't originally one of the, the sort of way out front saying, we need to do this, we need to do this. But when we got our space needs study back and we saw that it was essentially going to cost us the same to expand and, and renovate, uh, existing facilities. And at the end of the day, in 20 years, we will have essentially, uh, buildings that are now 20 years older uh, and, uh, no, no better able to serve our future needs. Uh, and the, the plan here is to do something that will, uh, actually serve us well for the next 50 years. 50 years ago, there were 14,000 people in this county. Today, there are 85,000 people. Uh, you can't get by with the same kind of, uh, working conditions and, and building, uh, support that, uh, that we did at, at one time. Uh, and, and I think it's important also to remember that we had about, I, I, I thought I counted 18, but your, your math is maybe better. It was 21, folks, folks tonight. Um, you, did you count PEG as part of that?
Yes, I did.
I did count PEG in that.
But, um, that, uh, I, I remember meetings where this idea was presented to James City County residents in a room that had three, four, five times that many people. And where the, uh, the response was, was very positive. And at the end of the day, we will have, uh, in 20 years, we'll have paid off that, uh, expenditure and still have much more life to go. And that 20 years will have allowed people who are going to benefit in the future to help cover the cost of that, those facilities, not expect at all to be, uh, picked up in each year's capital budget expenditures as we, uh, sort of slap Band-Aids on and, and see if we can find a, uh, some, uh, shell buildings that we can take over or, or old, uh, or retail space that might not be currently utilized. So, I think that, uh, that, uh, this, um, uh, building makes a lot of sense. And, and it sometimes seems to me that, you know, some, some people sort of only discovered that we've been talking about this for five years. And it's kind of like sent, being in a train station and saying, well, I didn't really check the schedule, but could you bring the train back to the station and pick me up so that we can, so I can get on, on the road again? Uh, it's, you know, we've reached out. We've tried to make sure that people knew what we were doing. And I think that, uh, that we ought to recognize that there are always going to be complaints. You know, I hear that, well, we, we could get a, a better, uh, interest rate. Uh, and it would save us over the 20 years, $600,000. Do you know what we would lose in terms of just the delay? Uh, it would be much more than $625,000 that, uh, that, that would be lost after what we've already invested in, uh, moving this project, project forward. Um, there's, there's a question, I, I, I did want to address a couple of issues that, that folks, uh, raised. Um, I heard about concern, uh, about, uh, uh, low income residents, uh, elderly folks who are living only on social security and, and not able to, uh, um, uh, stay in their homes, uh, their, their modest homes. Uh, uh, and I would remind folks that we have a program in place that forgives part of property taxes for older citizens who are below a certain income level. And we've raised that income level. And, uh, we need to not, uh, say, oh, well, these folks will be driven out of their house, but, but encourage them to take advantage of a program for which they might qualify. You know, part of the reason that we have to expand some of our staff and, uh, recognize that, uh, you know, we're not, we're not exactly a business. We are often doing things that aren't profitable because no one else will do it, but they have to be done. And so, we, I think about, you know, those senior citizens who are, uh, whether they're in, in, uh, an affluent gated community, or if they are in a, uh, townhouse or apartment or, uh, uh, in, in, uh, a rural area in a, in a trailer, who need the help of our social services department. Whether it's for ensuring that they have a, a decent meal or whether they, uh, are able to, uh, have some contact with other people, talk about, uh, the concerns that they have, make sure that they have that connection to other folks in the community that helps to fight off some of the deterioration in, uh, in, uh, our elderly population. Uh, that's something that, that, uh, we ought to be trying to, to recognize that, uh, is another part of our vital expenditures, uh, that would not really easily, be easily picked up in some other way. It would probably be available if you could afford to buy an insurance program that would cover it. Uh, but, uh, not too many of them will cover that kind of social work. Uh, we know that our fire department, uh, is called on much more often now because of the number of senior citizens who need those services to be available on a moment's notice. Uh, we know that our libraries are actually heavily used and that we're way behind in square footage. And the programming that goes through those libraries is incredible. Uh, if you ask, uh, as we do when we do a survey for our comprehensive plan, what's the number one service that, that residents point to? Our libraries. They said, they are just outstanding. And they're right. And we've been recognized, uh, as one of the best, uh, in this state, in the state, time and time again. So, uh, those are all things that, that, uh, matter to me. I, I have to say that, um, uh, you know, I, I know there's a, a concern about whether we should once again, uh, do a credit. I think we, we tried to make it as clear as possible last year that what we were doing was trying to cushion the impact of, of a one-year increase. And if we say, you know, we want to do another credit this year that will save the average homeowner about $7 a month, then, you know, it'll be the same thing the year after. There will be an expectation. And we know that our friends in, in York County have had to raise their tax rate four cents this year because they are underfunding capital. They're underfunding some of their expenses. And they don't have nearly the, the, uh, burden that we do in terms of, uh, providing funding for our schools.
That's correct.
So, um, uh, you know, my sense is that, that, um, if we can, that we need to focus some attention on, uh, providing accurate information to our citizens about, uh, our budgeting process and the results of that process. Uh, and, uh, I, I think, I, I commend the county administrator for putting together this budget. Um, uh, like any good county administrator, he is of course always ready to, um, get out his sharp pencil if, if we tell him he needs to do that. Um, but I, I think that, uh, from my perspective, um, we, uh, need to let people know that, uh, they are getting excellent services and it costs some money to do that. But this is a reasonable rate. You know, the average, uh, um, real estate rate in the country is over a dollar. That's the average, you know, uh, and, uh, when, when, you know, we had a gentleman last year who wanted to remind me that he had taken my class many years ago. And, and that he was on the school board in New Jersey and he could tell budget of want from a budget of need and that we were just, you know, uh, pushing a budget of want. Well, I, I looked at his community's tax rate, $2. $2. And he was on the school board and the schools accounted for a dollar 13 of that. So, um, you know, this is, uh, a community that, uh, values quality services. And, uh, it's a community that, uh, I think, uh, just needs to have clear, accurate information and, and not, uh, kind of effort to stir up a rebellion of, of one kind or another. Um, so, uh, that's, that's my point of view on this. And, you know, assessments, uh, are based on what people are willing to pay for homes. We don't control that. So, um, I'll just leave it at that.
I just was curious when the lady spoke about the libraries. Now, I go to the libraries and the Croker one, there's maybe 10 people in there when I go. So, I was discussing this with some friends of mine the other day. They never step foot in the library. They get all their books online from the library. So, I think people are pulling away from actually physically going in. So, I would question whatever stats we have that we need another one at all. Just throwing that out there. Because if you've got people, 50% of the people, because somebody called me and said, well, how many people have library, um, passes? Well, it's 42,000. Well, I have one, but I don't, you know, I don't use it. I do everything online. So, what I'm saying is, you know, it doesn't, that doesn't say that 42,000 people are going to the library. It says 42,000 people may be using it, but they may be doing things online. So, if we could get away from building a new library, that could save us a lot of money. And then I heard a rumor, and I don't know if this is true, that, um, the city has decided not to build a new library.
I think they're doing listening things.
There's listening, okay. But, um, just a thought.
Well, I, I would ask us to get the information from Sandy to see what the usage is. And if you wa- went into the Croker library, you didn't go to the children's.
Yeah.
That room is used for sure. Um,
I go in there all the time, but, but, I mean, there's people in and out, but.
Yeah, the kids' area is definitely, um, very busy, but.
And your suggestion of bringing in our library director, let her talk through that. I know she has provided a fact sheet and usage and it, gosh, I hate to make up the number. She would, she can track that information and tell you how many are coming in, how many are doing it virtually and all that information. But I think that'd be great to have her and I know she'd be willing to do that.
I'd like to see that. And then I think you all know from talking to me over the years is, um, you know, you've got these raises for staff and raises for staff. I, I was in a business for 37 years where all we got every year was cost of living. And I think if we could go to something like that, I mean, everybody last year got 5%, then the teachers got seven, I think, the year before. I mean, if we just did cost of living raises, everybody would think that was fair because that's what social security gets. So, I don't know. I mean, every year we shouldn't have to be negotiating a new raise. If it's 1.5%, it's 1.5% what the government says. Just, that's my thought, my opinion.
Well, I know when, when I got on the board, a little bit of time I've been on there, in the first year, we were looking at might not be able to do a raise. And so, we did 1%. So, let's go ahead and plug in 1% raise. Well, at least let staff know we were doing something. But the problem was, we were losing staff. And so, when you can't afford to lose staff and then you can't perform the services and then the staff that is here ends up having to work twice as hard and then they get burned out. It, if you start, in a business, you start a snowball. And I've tried it in my business where, you know, I got, I'll hire a contractor or, or carpenter at this amount. And then eight months later, they leave. I hired one at this amount and he retired at 28 years with me. And it made a big difference. And it was reliability. It was somebody being there. So, you know, it's a balance. We can always look at, you know, what those numbers are, but there's a balance in keeping people.
But they also got, get longevity raises, which we didn't ever, you know, like if you get fourth year, fifth year, sixth year, you, you still get that raise.
Right.
But then they're getting this on top of that.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't, we don't have longevity raises. We don't have steps. Uh, we, we don't have steps. We don't have any, ours is strictly what we do, whether it's a general wage increase or merit. That is all we're providing typically. Last year with the compensation study implementation was different. A couple of years prior to that, where we had trouble policing fire, we did something in September. The fall might have been two or three years ago because we were having trouble with public safety. We did something different there to try to address that problem. But generally speaking, our employees are getting whatever raise. And this year, it's a 3% July 1st. And then if money is allowable, a 1% January. And that is, York County's doing 4% plus $500. The other communities are doing 4%. So, if we do three, it's okay, but you'll start eroding where right now, we're a little above average, which is what's, I think, changed our demographic of being able to hire. Is we slip behind that, we'll be back in a position where we can't recruit and retain people. And so, I, I'm not trying to get ahead of the others, but I don't want to fall behind.
I was under the impression after working with Doug, JCSA, that they do have longevity raises.
Um, they have a step program.
They have a step program.
I don't know about longevity, but they do have a step program where when you've been here so many years, you do get a prescribed raise. They implemented that in the last year or two. Uh, we haven't moved to that.
And, and we just got over the, the fact that William and Mary and everybody else was taking all our people. And I remember that, we lost two more, we lost three more, we lost. And now, we're, we're gaining that back up where we should be because we're competitive. And I'd hate to see us lose that after all we've been through to, to get to this point and then go back in the, the other direction. And, and that would definitely not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be in that position because, you know, running a business, it's, it's tough enough to keep people, much less try to bring new ones in.
So, can I speak to that point? Um, I'm just walking it back tonight. Um, so, I made a comment during this budget time about Doug Holrod, Royd, in my, yes. I'm sorry, Doug, um, about, I thought, I misinterpreted a comment that he made about, um, that we paid, we didn't pay good, um, well. And what, he was going back and forth with the superintendent, but he and I had a discussion last week. And I think his point is well-taken in that we are in this competition with one another. We can't keep up. And so, you know, York County Schools doing, say, I'm gonna say 7%. I'm not 100%, but, and then there we are, we're scrambling. Our schools' divisions coming to us saying, we need this because we're losing teachers to them. And so, his point was, at some point, you know, we, we're gonna have to all try to even out. So, we're not constantly pulling from one another. And, which I think is a, is a valid point. And, um, you know, and, and if I'm repeating myself, I, I, but in some of these budget discussions, I did talk to a citizen who said, teachers don't teach for the money. That is not true. And I don't know if it was true at some point, but I am here to tell you, that is not true any longer. It is a highly educated, they are highly trained, they are professionals. They love their students, but they need to make a living. And I just talked to a ma- a friend of mine this weekend at a store here, James City County, Texas. We were buying things. Um, and her, um, one of her children, who's a teacher, and so is their spouse. And they're leaving the profession because they cannot afford to have two teachers. And so, we're losing a teacher of the year because they've got to go and support their family in different, in a different way. So, I don't want to be glib about that. It, it is important that we pay and recognize that skill. And, and so, teachers are, they deserve to make a living wage, as do our employees. I hear that a lot too. You don't need to pay them well. Yes, we do. You all work very hard for the citizens of this county. You need to make a living wage. So, um, I wanted to make sure that I followed up on that and I think that's it. But I do want to thank you and your department and all that you've done to get us to this point as well.
Um, if we can, at this point, I, before I make any comments, I would, uh, since I'm the one who brought up the issue of the two cents, and I don't know whether there's support for it on the board, but I would like to find out, just in an informal poll amongst us. If there's not support for it, that's fine. But I wanted to, uh, I would, I would like to see us do the two cent. Um, I think it, uh, it helps cushion a little bit more. I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference because we're leaving the actual tax rate at 83. Next year, we're gonna have reassessments anyway. And we're gonna be looking at, at what that does and, and how we're gonna be moving. So, it's a whole new game again next year. I don't think we're setting any expectation, be quite honest with you, about, um, this going forward. I think it's just to try to help bring us up to that 83 at the, at the end of the point. So, I would like to see us do that two cent. And, and if you, if you're, if you, if there's a majority of the boards in favor of it, I'd like to see if we could, uh, do it. If not, then we'll just press on.
I'll, I'll start it off and, and, you know, I'm, I'm, like I've said before, I don't want to pay any more tax than I have to. But I don't want to lose ground where we are. And, um, you know, and, and, you know, we did that last two cycles. And we said, okay, we're gonna give you X amount. And, and that's when they kind of cushioned the, the thing. Well, that's a, that's a state mandate. You're gonna go out and you're gonna assess and you're gonna keep up with current. That's to keep counties from waiting five, six, seven. That's to keep counties from waiting five, six, seven years and then blasting somebody with a huge bill that nobody was expecting. And so, you know, that keeps us on track and all that, and we have to do that. It's, it's not that we're going out and going, you know, where can we make another dollar on this? So it, it's, it's mandated from the state. We have made good progress to where we are. We're starting to get in a decent position. We don't know what the economy's gonna do. Costs are going up for everybody, and y'all's houses, I mean, all of y'all pay taxes, too. I pay taxes, I pay plenty of taxes. And, um, it tickles me when somebody goes, you don't know what a, you know, how much it costs in taxes. Well, yeah, I do, I might want to switch with you, and maybe we can trade, and you pay my bill, I'll pay yours. Um, so, and, and, and like I say, I don't want to pay another dime, but I don't want to see us lose ground that we're on right now. And it took us a while to get here. We've got a tight budget. We watch our money. We don't recklessly spend it. And we are very conscious of the money because we know it comes from the citizens, and we're entrusted to do the best we can with the money that we have. And, um, so I would be no. And I'll just put it right out there because I think we've worked where we've gotten, we've gotten in a, in an area that, we've moved very smart through this area and tried to make sure that we're spending on everything we need to spend. Like I say, the, the new building, everybody's talking about the new building, and that's the cost. It's not the cost, that's a spread over cost, and that's a cost to cut down things in the long run. And over time, it'll come, somebody will say it. It'll come back and it'll be like, boy, that was a smart move. Whatever board that was, and they won't remember any of us, whatever board that was, was a smart move back then because it saved us in the long run. We're not looking at next year. We're looking at twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years out and how we're spending our funds. That's my two cents. Barbara.
I'm okay with it, two percent, two cents.
Okay with the two percent.
It's something.
So I would rather us work towards something next year when we see what, where the assessments are, rather than this year. Um, I think when we have not fully funded the school ask and then to do a two-cent credit, I, I just have a real issue with that. And I, I know, realize that we, we have heard from people, I do think some of that was information that was not completely correct. But we heard from many, many, many more people regarding the school budget. We received almost a thousand emails where people were very upset that we were not funding, and, and they have said that there are things they're not going to be able to do. So for us to then turn around and say, well, we're gonna do a two-cent, I just don't think that is the right thing to do.
Okay, so you're. No, okay. All right, that answers that question. Okay, um, if you guys don't mind, I would like to, uh, do a quick sum up from, from my point of view. I appreciate the chance that, that, I promise I'll be brief. Important thing that I think has already been mentioned by some of my colleagues is that when we look at our budget priorities, number one priority is public safety. Number two is public education, number three is everything else. And I, I, I look at, at, um, a general tenet that I think we should be operating under, which we have successfully for quite a while, is that the revenue growth in this county should approximate population growth plus inflation. And if you take a look at the general fund where the real estate and personal property taxes we pay go into that fund, over the past ten years, the general fund revenues have risen by thirty-five point eight percent. Uh, the population has increased thirteen percent and inflation twenty-eight point eight. And so the net result is, for the past decade, our general fund revenue growth has been, uh, six percent behind population plus inflation. So we basically are keeping within that, what I think is a reasonable constraint. I, I took a look at it also from a per capita spending standpoint. And I said, if you took your twenty-seventeen general fund spending and divided it by the population, it was two thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars per person. Ten years later now, if you applied the inflation factor to that, what would that be in, in today's dollars? That would be three thousand four hundred and eight dollars. Well, our budget for two thousand and six is three thousand one hundred and eighty-eight. So we are, in fact, um, keeping reasonable control on it, I think. If you can, I got, we, we put up a slide for me? Here's one that I, I wanted to put up, and that has to do with our real estate, real, real estate tax rates. You know, if, if you take a look, I've asked the, I asked Scott and the staff to put this together because I had done some back of the envelope, and they refined the numbers for me. But it, uh, if you'll take a look, and these are the eleven communities that are in the Tidewater Metropolitan Region that are what I consider to be urban. Uh, and they range from a dollar thirty down to Williamsburg sixty-two cents. And, um, at ours, at eighty-three cents is the only, only lower one is York County and, and the city of Williamsburg. We, uh, if you had a four hundred thousand dollar house, that's what you're gonna pay in taxes. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things that people come, come here, and they, they live here for a reason. And that, they, they like the quality of our schools, they like the quality of our community. They probably also like the fact that we pay less taxes than if we were located at any of these other places in the Tidewater area. The next one, please, if you would. This is one thing I looked at was, how has our staff been? Have we, have we been running a month with hiring staff? And the answer is no, we've been very consistent right along the line here. You can see we've had a little, little blurbs and everything, but essentially from nineteen ninety-six for thirty years, um, our population trend and our full-time equivalents has been pretty much on track. And I actually spent out, uh, went out and took a look at some of the numbers on it. I said, uh, um, essentially, population growth has been ninety-four, uh, five percent over that thirty years. Full-time staffing has grown by ninety point six, and the total staffing has grown by ninety-seven point seven. And if you actually work that out to a, um, how many members of our population that each of our staff members support, that was one hundred and seven in ninety-six, it's one hundred and five today. So it's not, uh, drastically different. It's been remarkable, remarkably accurate with, with our, our, um, population. One thing I do want to bring to people's attention is that we have very, very good public safety services. Actually, I think some of the best in the, in the state. We do it on a very lean budget. We have one hundred and eight sworn police officers. Think about that. That's one hundred and eight sworn police officers, round the clock, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Those people are working long, hard shifts, and they keep our community safe. And we do it with a, a very efficient and lean organization. Same thing with our firefighters. We have a hundred and thirty-six firefighters and EMT for a population of almost eighty-five thousand people. That's, that's phenomenal. I did want to reiterate, uh, as, uh, Mr. McGlinnan mentioned, that, uh, when I hear about folks who are having trouble staying in their houses, we do have that program, elderly and disabled real estate, uh, tax exemptions. If you own or live in your property in James City County, you're sixty-five or older, or totally and permanently disabled, regardless of age, an annual income of fifty-five thousand or less, and net worth of two hundred thousand or less, which excludes your home and ten acres of land, then you can qualify for an exemption. I think a lot of people need to know about that. There should be no reason. We have the, the ability to protect people in, in those circumstances. Essentially, I would say, uh, something, we are a growing and thrive, thriving community. Our services are excellent. Our costs to provide these services are significantly less than the vast majority of the surrounding localities. We've consistently kept the county's revenue growth at or below, uh, growth, uh, population plus inflation. And our fiscal policies have yielded adequate reserves and consistently earned a triple-A bond rating. We are a fiscally responsible and well-managed community. And I believe that that's truly the case. I think we have a really great community. With that, I will look to the board for any, now, we, we have the errata sheet for where we are.
You do.
Okay. Do you want to?
Do we get? That is back on that first slide. We can back up to that slide. Take me back to this one who has that.
Actually, this is the.
I will just have the general fund.
With this errata sheet, correct?
Can I just make a comment regarding your, the, um, you did the, uh, property tax, um, comparison? And I also would just add that, and I think you mentioned it, but I think it's worth saying again, it, it is very difficult to do apples-to-apples comparison because we give a great deal of contribution to schools that our counterparts in York do not have, that, because of federal land and other things that, that they're, they, um, they, don't get me wrong, they make plenty of contribution to their schools, but there are some different funds that they get, and that goes with the other, some of the other ones that you listed as well. And so, um, we are, we do a lot to support our schools. And on, as I mentioned earlier, um, other outside agencies as well.
We have the errata sheet. This is, uh, where we would be with the changes.
With your general fund budget, this, there weren't changes to the other funds, they were what were in the proposed budget.
Okay. And we, is this one resolution? Which does the, the, one resolution which approves the budget and appropriates the money? Okay?
That's adding that million.
Yes.
Okay. Motion for approval.
Motion for approval. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Noel? Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion cares.
Okay. We will now. Order request and directives.
I've talked enough, nothing.
You, you're done, huh?
Done.
Barbara, anything?
Um, I'll just be very quick. Um, just again, thank you. I know that it's a lot of hours that goes into the budget, and I appreciate everything that everybody has done and look forward to continued discussions, um, as we move forward. And I do hope that you will consider something akin to a budget game. But I did want to take just a moment and, um, talk about a former colleague of mine from the school board, um, Joe Fuentes, who passed away last Thursday. Um, Joe and I were both elected to the school board in two thousand and six. And Joe was also, uh, one of our representatives on the Virginia Peninsula Community College Board. And he had done that, I think, since two thousand and twenty-two. And, um, he served on the school board for ten years. And Joe was just, um, when I was sending a note to former superintendents, to Gary Matthews, Steve Constantino, and to let them know that, that Joe had passed away, um, Steve said, "Nobody could get under my skin like Joe." But he was supportive. And he, Joe was just meticulous, like, there were just, he could go through a budget or a policy, and he just, that was just his wheelhouse, and, and that mattered to him that you get it right. But he cared about people. When I was on the school board for about three and a half months, I lost my sister unexpectedly. And, um, on the day of her funeral, Joe came. And, um, he didn't know me that well, but he just came to be supportive of me and my family. And he spent almost all day at our house in the living room. And why that's important is because in the living room were all the people, like, my sister-in-law's mother-in-law, that had to come. But, um, but probably, you know, would probably have been happy back at her house in Roanoke. And just people that didn't, didn't really know my sister as well as other people, but, um, but wanted to be there. And he stayed there in that living room, and he talked to those people. And he took that burden off of me, somebody that he didn't know that well. And that was just kind of the, kind of the guy he was. And he showed up for people. And he showed up for this community. And, um, you know, this school board today, they got it easy. When we served on the school board, we had, um, student discipline hearings every meeting. Meaning, we came in at about four o'clock, and we heard whatever. If you tried to drink at prom, if you tried to skip out on, whatever it was, we were hearing that hearing. And, um, so, and we did redistricting. It was, it was a tough ten years, but he gave it his all. And just like he gave friendship his all, and just like he gave the Virginia Peninsula Communicate College his, his all. And we are a better James City County because of it. And I am a better board member because of what I learned from Joe. So, thank you, Joe, and I'll miss you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth, for that, you know, and, and you really captured Joe so well. He was such a caring person, so detail-oriented so much, uh, uh, that it, it was just, when you, when you, let me know that he had passed away, it was just such a shock to think that I wouldn't have those conversations that I sometimes felt went on a little too long. But always, always came away from with, with some really, uh, important things to think about. And I'd ask for a better friend.
That's right.
He was just. He also lost course, uh, um, Bill Porter's wife, Ann. And she was part of the James City County family, as, as was he. Uh, and, uh, a treat to hear about her musical alludes and her, um, desire to travel and get out there and meet people. From Richmond or. So, um, sad week, uh, to hear that news. But, uh, a great opportunity to remember two wonderful people. I also wanted to mention that, um, last Saturday, I attended the, um, uh, plant sale and green thumbs, uh, uh, sale for the Master Gardeners. Actually, I didn't attend that, my wife. But, but I, I did go the, the week earlier for the tree planting ceremony, uh, at, at the Botanical Garden. Barbara was there as well.
One tree, I thought we were gonna, I was ready to plant trees, I had my gloves and everything.
But you got the full tour of the garden.
Yeah.
Botanical garden. Jim, our chair was there as well. So that, that was great. And then, uh, last Wednesday, I think it was, Ruth and I were at, uh, the, um, teacher recognition event. Uh, um, the school division represent, that recognized both the teacher and support employee of the year for each school. Very, very lovely ceremony. And, uh, uh, thanks to an anonymous donor, um, there was a, a really nice gift for those who, uh, were recognized. So, uh, with, and I know that Scott was there as well, so I'll, I'll turn it over.
Um, and I, I do appreciate you all covering for me at the teacher event because I, uh, was prepped and had, was out of town for a funeral of a close friend, uh, who, um, was an army veteran and, um, actually served in the, as a reservist that called up for the first Gulf War. So, but he's, uh, we lost him unexpectedly, and so we had a quick trip to Ohio to, for the funeral up there. But I appreciate you, you know, giving my, my regrets to the, uh, for the teacher of the year because I normally would love, love to be there for those things. So, um, the Habitat for Humanity, um, Home Repair Blitz was one thing I attended back on the twenty-sixth. The Housing and Development, uh, Community Development and along with Habitat, Habitat, Habitat for Humanity Peninsula in Greater Williamsburg. Uh, we had about seventy volunteers out there. Uh, had, uh, Williamsburg Community Foundation, United Way of Virginia Peninsula, and YMCA helping. The Home Repair Blitz was on Clark Lane neighborhood, about seven homes. And I managed to go to that before I went over to the, uh, tree planting with you all at the, I think. The only other thing I had was, um, April twenty-eighth was mayors and chairs. We could do this once a quarter, I think. We, uh, went down to Newport News, and, uh, we, some of the discussion items were the impact that the veterans' real estate tax exemption was having on some of our communities. And I think for us, it's about four to five million, and some of the other communities, it was pretty, uh, pretty substantially higher. And we discussed the potential for, uh, maybe talking to the state about providing some sharing of, uh, the burden required for that. And maybe even looking at potentially trying to, uh, tie some of it more to, uh, financial need as opposed to just, uh, you know, uh, right now, there is, there is nothing along that line. We talked, uh, at, for our first time, I found out that Williamsburg was having to raise their water rate thirty percent because of. because of capital needs that they were having to do. Gloucester, tolls are coming off the bridge. They're going to wait and see how that works. I think it's going to come off by January first, twenty-six, possibly earlier. And then that was the first time I'd heard that York was raising their tax rate to seventy-eight cents. And that's all I have, reports of the county administrator.
Can I follow up on your... So, BML and VACO have a working group regarding the veterans' exemption? And what, you know, what our goal is, is to try to make sure this is a sustainable program because at its current state, it is not. There are counties in Virginia like ours that pay a great deal. Stafford County, for example, I think they're up to twenty-one million. So, I'd be happy to get some more information or if somebody from mayors and chairs is interested in working on that working group. Then because, again, we're just asking... This is an unfunded mandate. And so, we are looking to the General Assembly to try to step in with us or step up or something like that. But I'm happy to share more information. But before I turn it over to Scott, I do want to mention that today, Delegate Batten and I attended a ribbon cutting for Colonial Aesthetics. They have been on Jamestown Road. They are very, very successful. And they needed bigger space, and they just moved up the hill. They stayed in Jame City County. They stayed in the Berkeley District. And Catherine White and Brittany Potachik and their team. So, that was exciting today. And I urge anybody to go see what they have to offer. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would just say thank you back on the budget support and guidance. Each of you, I know, takes it seriously. I've had a lot of conversations with each of you as we've gone through, and I appreciate those comments. And while most of the time, you're in the same place, sometimes you're not. But we've worked to get to a place, and I just wanted to say thank you for your support of us and staff's effort to bring the budget to you as well. So, that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. We now... I need a motion to enter closed session for the following items. Number one is discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and a discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section two point two-three-seven-one-one A twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to the contract for the joint operation of schools between the county and the city of Williamsburg. And number two, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section two point two-three-seven-one-one A three of the Code of Virginia pertaining to thirty-nine twenty-six Vas Lane in Williamsburg, Virginia. We're so moved. You got it? We have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call the roll.
Aye.
Hippel, Ms. Knoll, Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are in closed session.